Now we are recording. My agenda, this is the Town of New Canaan Town Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, March 24th, 2020 at 7:03 PM. This will be a virtual meeting. Those wishing to participate can do so through Zoom. And we will have the regular, we will give the opportunity for the public to address the Town Council at the beginning of the meetings. And you can see that in the chat window. Let me just remind you to please sign up in the chat window if you want to speak to us. We will address you in the order in which you sign up in the chat window. For Town Council members who want to be recognized, there is, you can either do so in the chat window, say, you know, I have something to say, or you can use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. And with that, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance Roll Call and Call the Order. So with that, all rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay, take seat. Thank you very much. Tom O'Day raised his hand. No, Tom, you can't. Okay.
Mike's here. Do you want me to take roll, John?
Yes, please.
Okay, Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Liz Donovan. Liz Don- Christina Ross.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Sven England.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Mark Jinsky.
Here.
Penny Young.
Here.
Maria Notton.
Here.
Robin Bates-Mason.
Here.
Rich Townsend.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
You have a quorum. Everyone is here, John.
Excellent. Okay, and with that, we will begin with public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address, and comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Would anyone like to speak during the public comment? The first person is Tom O'Day. So the chair recognizes Tom O'Day. Go ahead, Tom.
No, I hit the self-view.
Thank you.
All right, guys, I'm gonna just listen in here, honey, while he.
John, can you remind everyone to mute if not speaking? That'd be helpful.
Yeah, I'm racing around muting things as they pop up.
So should I start, John? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, I'm just calling in to voice my strong support for the new library project as presented with both the underground parking and the green space. And there's going to be some comment about, from the preservationists group, to save the small front wall of the old library, original library. And I sent an email to everyone on the Board of Finance, the Town Council, and the Board of Selectmen. It just went out recently. You know, there's two people that I respect probably more than any others in town, Laszlo Pap and Keith Simpson, who I believe are on opposite sides of that issue. I will let them speak for themselves, but the two of them I respect deeply implicitly. But I agree with Laszlo on this point. I think if the preservationists can get the money, raise the money, and without delaying the project, move that front wall somewhere, or get the library to agree voluntarily to put it somewhere in the project, then I'm all for that. But I don't want the project delayed or the costs increase. I know we're in, look what we're doing right now, we're Zoom, we're doing a Zoom meeting because of what's going on in the world right now. And obviously, the state of Connecticut was already in financial trouble. It's only going to be worse. I believe that's only more reason to go forward with the library project as soon as possible because I do believe we're going to be competing with Westport, Greenwich, Darien, and Wilton for the people that are going to be moving out of the city. And what do all four of those towns have much better, newer, bigger libraries? And I put this in my email, and I said this in the past, I truly believe from the bottom of my heart that we're going to look back on this project and we're going to look back the same as the way we look back at Waveney. That, you know, this is going to be the single biggest, best investment we've made in many, many years and for decades to come. So, you know, I was, I was, I was active in working on the, putting in sidewalks. I was active in, and I was actually the original person starting the outdoor dining. Those projects are miniscule compared to the impact that this library will have. And I strongly urge its support as is. But I understand a lot of my good friends are on the other side of this issue. But I appreciate your time and attention and happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Marty McLaughlin.
Okay, go ahead, Marty.
Some of us have been involved with the library for over eight years, interviewing with the architects and spending time and treasure for that period of time to accomplish something for the town, which is so important to everyone. I have a modest proposal similar to what O'Day has just said, that I'd like to offer those who are interested in the preservation of the, of the old building to get a group together, raise funds, and, and get that moved to where you wish. I'm sure the library would be happy to give you that product as soon as possible. I think that the plans as is for the library is a tremendous improvement for the whole group. And I think it, it reflects the Johnson Glass House, and a lot of time was spent thinking and looking and planning, and we came up with this after so much time. And so we appreciate everyone's input. We're all looking for the very best for the town. And so that's my modest proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
I do.
Christine Seaver, you are next.
Okay, am I here? Thanks, John. Thanks for pulling all this together, everybody. I won't take too long. I think a number of comments about how important this is, this new library project is, and economic driver have already been said. But I do want to add that we are all keenly aware of how much uncertainty we face now. I mean, this economic environment is extremely difficult, and it's the kind of situation that can either cause you to sort of halt and pull back in fear and just kind of wait and see how things blow over. It's also a time of great opportunity. And when you can make an investment with pieces in place, the way this project has right now, funding from private, from private sources, a committed group to go out and raise more funds, and then some money investment from the town, it basically 30 cents on the dollar to bring this economic engine, it just feels like it's, it's a great time to show, to show courage and push forward, and I would encourage you to do that. We are all behind you. We know that, that we're facing, you know, rough, rough road ahead. But when you've got something that can bring promise, that can show palpably with something going up, that there's a future and activity and young people coming in, well, it just seems for 30 cents on the dollar, it's worth taking. I also worry about the, the risks that hiatus might, might bring, something with conditions like holding off to see how the old building could stay in place the way it's been proposed. We have $16 million committed to the design we have at hand. So at the very least, there would be a redesign involved that costs money and time. We'd have to go back and look at how the building would integrate, a new building would integrate with the old. We'd have to redesign entrances and exits, relationship with the downtown, drainage, geothermal wells. There are many complications that would put things, causes to put things on hold and risk delay. You also have to go back to the people who've given the 16 million and make sure that they are still okay with a very different design because it's not the one they had contributed to. I don't know if you lost me, I lost you.
No, we can see you. Somebody grabbed the screen.
Something, something just came in. And then I would, and then just finally, we'd have a year or more delay before we can even go out and start fundraising again. So there are many, many risks that seem particularly at this time, we can, we can avoid and we should avoid. So I hope that you will support this project now and let us get started because we are ready to do so, as Lisa will explain. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not sure what, are you all able to see?
Meredith Bach is presenting.
Meredith, can you stop sharing your screen, please?
I'm trying to fix what I just messed up.
Okay, at the top of the screen, it says share screen. You can also unshare screen.
Share screen. I'm seeing new share. I don't know what I did. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. It really, it's okay. I have an option that says stop participating.
You're all learning.
Yeah, Meredith?
Yes.
Meredith, it's Tom.
Hi, yes.
To the top and put your mouse up top and there'll be a little red thing popping.
I see it.
Stop sharing.
Thank you.
That works?
Yes.
There we go.
There we go.
Sorry.
Now I see Tom.
Okay. We heard everything you said. You just became very small in the right, on the right side, Christine, but we heard you and we could see you. Okay.
Hey, John, real, John, real quick, can you check with folks at home? I'm hearing that the audio on 79 isn't working.
I have heard that, too. Is that something that, I guess if channel set, you can see channel 79 behind me, over my shoulder, but if I turn it up the sound, it'll reverberate.
John?
Yes.
John, I'm told that the, the 79 person did not arrive at Town Hall tonight, and we have apologies from Paul Sedlak, but maybe the video is all we're gonna get.
Okay.
I'll follow up more.
John, can you do me a favor and hold up a sign or put it, post the sign so when you come up, it says video only tonight or something so people know?
Me?
Yeah, that way people know that, don't expect video on channel 79. Tell them to tune in or something. Just write a sign up.
Okay.
Sorry. Give you, John.
Our next speaker is Meredith Bach, please. I'm gonna unmute Meredith now. Go ahead.
Thought I unmuted. Thank you, good evening. I'm a fourth generation New Canaanite. I'm currently living in Roatton, but I work in New Canaan. I'm the president of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. So the, the library is something that I'm very passionate about, especially this new one. And as corny as it sounds, if we build it, people will come. And I'm really talking about people outside of New Canaan that will be able to enjoy this, that will bring a great economic impact to the town as well. I think what the library currently offers brings people in. I live five miles away from the library, and I'm in New Canaan on a regular basis.
And Robin, then?
On a regular basis. So I support the project as is, and our family, the Bach family, is very supportive, and we've also been part of the donating crowd, and we look forward to continuing to support it.
Thank you. The next on our list is Eileen Thomas.
Hi, John, can you guys hear me? I'm a new Zoom user. Apologize. I am also a longtime Canaanite. I've been a library user since 1970 and a, both a taxpayer and an active library donor for over 30 years. And I guess there's a couple of things that I wanted to be able to reiterate in terms of my support for this project and to ask the Town Council to please consider the plans as they are being presented to you and act on them tonight, is that, you know, as many people have said, our library is a town treasure. But the treasure, I believe, is not the building that it occupies, but rather the spirit of New Canaan and the spirit of philanthropy that makes New Canaan Library pretty special. Most of you guys probably understand that New Canaan Library is an association library, which means that 30% of its operating costs and almost all of its capital costs for the past 140 years have been privately funded. It was founded by a private club for the public good of providing literature and culture to the citizens of New Canaan. And I guess what I wanted to point out is that the library, for the past 140 years, has been focused both on philanthropy and providing for the common good. If you look at the activity over the course of the last two weeks, and the ability of the library's leadership not only to plan for, but to execute within hours, plans to provide information, podcasts, digital resources, and ways of connecting to the community, it was not only planned for, but it was executed. In Superstorm Sandy, similarly, the library not only planned for, but executed almost immediately, an ability for residents to access Wi-Fi, to gather together, to get information, and to meet the needs that the challenge of the crisis was presenting to the community. What I, what I wanted to be able to point out is what the library is, is the treasure that's able to execute thoroughly research and present well thought through, well conceived plans that are actionable, and not only do that, but frankly, provide a tremendous amount of funding to make them happen to the citizenry of New Canaan. And I guess what I would ask is, when you think about what the costs and benefits are, the decisions that you're making around this project tonight, what would be the benefits of delaying? What has been a 15-year research and planning project that has been funded privately to the cost of almost a million dollars that suggests that the cost of maintaining the old building is higher than the benefits that it provides? You know, what would be the benefit of redoing that work over the course of the next year? And frankly, who would pay for that? And if the building was to be maintained as it has been brought up, who would be paying for that? What purpose would it provide? And what benefits are there that are actionable in the short run to the citizens of New Canaan? And I guess what I would like to be able to point out is that what I think the library leadership has done, both voluntary leadership and paid leadership very well, is to invest in, gather information, provide a very well thought through, researched, well executed plan, and funding to make that plan actionable. And the cost of delaying that, as Christine Seaver and others have probably pointed out, is not zero, right? Donors like myself and like others signed up for a specific plan, and it's not clear that all of those donors would support a plan that has been changed. You know, it's not clear that, that the economic benefits that have been identified by an independent research firm would come from a different plan. So I ask you to think about what's the cost and benefits of the time when our town, frankly, prior to the last two weeks, definitely needed economic boosting, and more so in, given the impact of the Corona crisis, will definitely need economic boost to try to help maintain a local vibrant business economy. So thank you very much. I just wanted to, you know, kind of point out the quality of the work that's been done.
Thank you, Eileen. Next on our list is, and I think is the last person to speak on our list, unless somebody else wants to sign up in the chat window. Number six is Pat Schubert.
Hi, I've lived here, or my family has lived here since 1987, and all three generations of the family here have used the library so much. My husband, in the last year of his life, went to the library as much as he could, and then I would get books for him. And that's what got him through some of his pain, was knowing the library was there and people would get books for him. I, I'm now with the family, hoping to start the children's garden, the Schubert Children's Garden, which sounds to me like something wonderful. And I love the fact that these plans include everybody, from the little tots reading books, up to the old people who can meet there for a coffee, and people from other towns we can meet there. So I would really hope that you all would look at these plans and pass them, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Is there anyone else? I think we have no, nobody else signed up to speak. If there's nobody, nothing further, we will move on to Housing Authority. We have two reappointments to the New Canaan Housing Authority. Do I have a motion on the floor to reappoint Michael Sweeney, whose term is to expire April 30th, 2024, and Bernard Simkin, whose term is to expire April 30th, 2025? Do I have a motion? Wait, I need somebody to actually say their name and then they move. Who?
It was Penny first and I seconded.
Okay, Penny makes the motion. Steve Carl seconds it. Any discussion? Okay, there being none. All in favor? I think we should go through the list. I mean, I can't, I can't actually see all of you on, on one screen, so.
You want me to do that, John?
Yes.
Okay, Tom Butterworth. Tom? He's muted. Tom, unmute and say.
Yes.
Okay. Liz Donovan. Christina Ross.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Sven England.
Hi.
Steve Carl.
Yes.
Mark Jinsky. Yes. Penny Young.
Here, yes.
Maria Notton.
Yes.
Robin Bates-Mason.
Yes.
Rich Townsend. Yes. Mike Morrow. Mike?
Let me see if he's on.
Hey, John?
Yes.
What are you voting on? I, I went into the room to turn the volume up. Can people hear now?
We can hear you now, and we're just voting on the reappointment of two members of the Housing Authority.
Oh, okay.
It's good practice to learn how to vote verbally.
And it's up, up to Mike Morrow currently.
But is the channel 79 volume okay now for people?
Much better.
Good. Okay, so no, no vote for Mike, unless I can find him. Unmute. I can't do it on the right side.
He's not, he's not at the screen.
Okay. All right, so are we, Rich, do we have all the votes?
We have 11 out of 12 positive.
Okay, so the motion passes, they are reappointed. Next on our list is Budget Review, a review and discussion of the proposed town budget for fiscal 2021, including a review of the following budget. First, first on our list is the Fire Department, Jack Hennessy. Jack, are you there?
I'm here. In the email I got, you did not want a presentation tonight, so I am prepared to answer any questions that the council might have for us.
You are allowed to present if you'd like, but we don't, the, the old presentation. If you have any slides, you, I, I think that the council, the council was very interested in the volunteer effort, and I think we were interested in the impact of a tax, a tax change. Ben, can you help me out here?
Yeah, I think Russ and I saw Phil up there for sure. So can you look in your meeting materials? You'll see that we've got the, we've got our item, Fire First Responder Benefits Presentation. So you can look at that, and hopefully Russ or Phil will jump in and run through it.
Yep. Hi, Sven, Russ Kimes here, and Phil's on the line as well. You there, Phil?
Yep, here. Hello, everyone.
Right. And I will present the presentation so you all can see it. Just let me know that it comes through. Here it comes.
So Russ Kimes is the Assistant Chief and head of the volunteers, volunteer firefighters in New Canaan, and Phil Shively is Captain of New Canaan EMS.
Right.
Thank you all for your time today. Phil and I will make this, as we can, I know you've got a lot on the agenda, and obviously, I think as you, if you have questions as we go, it's a little more difficult to navigate with a virtual meeting, but just jump in, jump up and down. We'll probably see you on the camera on the right, and we'll, we'll attempt to answer any questions you have as we go through here. So first and foremost, both organizations, Fire and EMS, are losing volunteers and need help. What you see here is a representation of the membership numbers for the New Canaan Fire Company, number one, as well as new EMS, slightly variations of time, but I, the line, the trend line is pretty clear as to what is occurring, not just with our department, but nationally. It is a national trend. I think anybody who's been involved in any form of volunteer service, much less first responders, have seen that there are numerous to compete against us for our time, and particularly, many people have multiple jobs. And so it's not only on the decline in New Canaan, but it's a national problem. And so, so it's doing volunteer firefighter numbers, for example, are the lowest recorded level since the NFPA began in 1983. And I think it's important that while a lot of the data is, shows fire service and fire service volunteers in Connecticut, as well as nationally, many volunteer EMS agencies are part or considered part of the fire departments. New Canaan has a very unique and extremely fortunate model, where it has a full volunteer stands, a paramedic, volunteer emergency medical corps. And we're, to be frank, in a position of, I don't want to say crisis, but we're pretty darn close to. We need to make corrective actions now in order to make sure that our volunteer organizations continue to exist in five, 10, 20 years. In particular, as we have attrition of our senior members, we're not filling those ranks in with junior members who can become officers or chiefs or captains themselves. Phil, I'll just pause it for a second on this slide. If you have anything you wanted to add on this one.
And no, only that as part of this strategic planning effort a couple of years ago, I reached out across the state of Connecticut to find other all-volunteer EMS organizations for some benchmarking. And number one, it was very hard to find any that were still all volunteer. Many of them have been forced to move to at least a hybrid model where, you know, day shifts are done by paid EMTs, night shifts by the volunteers. And those that I did find, Newtown, for example, still has one, they, they were having a similar issue with, you know, some drop off in their ability to recruit and retain volunteers. And so we're looking at contingency planning. We, you know, we've been lucky with EMS here just in the past year that we've got a, a good crowd of probationary members coming on board. But nonetheless, as Russ points out, the trend line is, is clear. So we're, we're looking for ways to try to change that curve.
And to follow up on that, while EMS, unfortunate, and very proactive, and we're looking to mirror some of the ways that they've leveraged social media and online tools, Fire's had a rough year and a half. Our volunteer recruitment, even over the past five years, is at a very low point right now, and we need help. So the recommendation that we're proposing is fairly straightforward, that there is a, it's, the state of Connecticut allows, allows, it'll allow us to, it'll aid us, at least for the resident members, in recruiting and retaining volunteers, and also show that the town is committed to its volunteer resources. Currently, the abatement is 1,500 in property taxes. The state is actually increasing it to 2,000 in 2021. Additionally, there is a provision in this that we would recommend strongly, regardless of whether they're volunteer or career, and this applies for a lot as well, that a survivor of a line of duty death member would have their tax abatement for all or a portion of their taxes. I think it's incredibly important, especially as we see the situation that we're working with now, where first responders are truly putting themselves out there in a time of national crisis, and it's your neighbors in the town that are doing that, that we commit to them, that heaven forbid they end up having a line of duty death or expiring in this, that we know that the town shows they're committed to their family and next of kin. Not all of our members are residents of New Canaan, and we actually have a slide in a second about that. In the Fire Department, about half of our members are not from New Canaan. We changed our rules to bring in members from surrounding communities, Norwalk, Stanford- We changed our rules to bring in members from surrounding communities, Norwalk, Stanford, Wilton. And therefore, a tax abatement would have no impact for them. And actually, in speaking with a number of our even residents, one of the things that came up the most was a pool pass. For them to be able to take their kid to a really nice pool in town where they're giving freely of themselves is really of no revenue impact to the town. It's, you know, it's a fixed facility, it's there. Other things that came to mind as we were discussing it was transfer station access. I know that was one that in particular, people were very enthusiastic about, things like the tennis courts. We threw tennis pitch station, or train station parking, only because, and I actually, I think the actual total utilization is pretty small. There's probably only up to five or six of us that actually commute, but it was just thrown in there as we were brainstorming of ideas of ways and things that we could do that would incentivize not only town members, but additionally, our non-resident members. And another thing that would also have no impact to the town cost-wise would be access to the group health insurance. We have a large number, I know especially in the Fire Department, of people who are tradesmen, people who are landscapers, whatever it might be, at no cost to the town, the premium paid fully by the volunteer, they would have access on the group rate that the town of New Canaan works, putting them in a much more advantageous position as opposed to if they had done it on their own. Bill, anything to mention?
Yeah, just that the access to health insurance was, is also part of the state regulation that allows towns to do that.
I'll let Phil take this one, if you want, Phil.
Yeah, so one of the things we did in, thinking through this and looking at it, was we went out and looked at the surrounding towns and what they have done with respect to this. That state reg allowing this has been in place for actually quite some time, more than 10 years. And maybe not surprisingly, but surprisingly to me anyhow, was that we found every town around us has had a tax abatement and other benefit plan in place for their volunteers for a number of years. You'll see on this slide that the tax abatement, in almost every case, is $1,000. That was the limit the state originally put on it. The 1,500 was, as you saw on a previous slide, an increase they did last year. We have not followed up with the towns to find out if they're all moving up to that new limit. We expect they probably are. As you can see, other towns have done some interesting things with, you know, life insurance policies, you know, payments for health, health clubs, all the way up to, in some cases, towns have built residences on the property of, for example, the firehouse, and made that available on a low-cost basis for folks to, again, provide incentive for them to continue to provide that service in town. So some interesting ideas out there, but the key takeaway is we are absolutely a standout in not having this in place versus the surrounding towns.
Yeah, and just to kind of expand on it, it's interesting because the one, the Pound Ridge example, where they have a rental, the demographics of both organizations are broad, right? I think in the Fire Department, we are, youngest members are 18, 19 years old, who are looking perhaps to become professional firefighters, and we provide a perfect stepping stone and get five years of exceptional service, because they're always the ones looking on to get on the job, or the ones that do the best work. And there are ways that we incentivize them to join. So that was a very clever way that Pound Ridge handled it, because I think they own certain properties. But as Phil alluded to, we're the exception. Every other community around us does these sorts of things. As of right now, there are no incentives for recruitment and retention in the town, except I think we have a $5,000 budget item in our budget, which we use for recruitment. Phil?
Yeah, so, you know, in thinking through this and perhaps making the case for it, if you will, there, to our mind, and I think to everyone's mind, if you think about this, there are some major benefits to having these volunteer organizations beyond what you would have if you did switch to a paid workforce. So obviously, we've got currently a high level of goodwill from the community. In fact, you know, we get contributions every year from the community to help support some of the costs that we do incur. By having all these volunteers as part of the community, most of them are still residents. We have additional resources that are on-call. If we have, you know, in our case with EMS, you know, multiple calls at one time, or if we have some kind of a large incident where you need additional resources, they're available on very short notice, which in most cases with paid services, the folks do not live in town and would not be available for that. And then, in addition, particularly with EMS, but with all of our emergency first responders, you know, they're around town, and if there's an incident that occurs, you know, more often than not, there's somebody that's, you know, there at the restaurant, or there at the athletic event, or, you know, two doors down the street from a call. And all of our folks do carry first responder equipment in their vehicles so that they can be of assistance for that. So just wanted to point some of those things out that hopefully people have seen, recognized, and believe contribute to the value of having this set we've got.
And in particular with Fire, it's very important in an actual, just taking a structured fire as an example, to have large quantities of people there very quickly. There are studies that vary on the numbers, but, you know, it takes roughly 30, 35 people to deal with a residential structure of fire, from command to all the different activities, from search and rescue to the hose lines, to water supply, to safety, that need to be there, and those first five, 10 minutes have a tremendous impact on the outcome of an incident. And there's a big difference between having someone who lives in town, drive to the firehouse and grabs the next truck out the door, or responds directly to the scene and starts talking to the homeowner to see if anyone is inside. That is why having volunteers in town is so incredibly important. Plus, I'll be frank, it's the reason I still live in town. The Fire Department is why I still live here, 39 years. I came back here because of the sense of community of New Canaan that I gained through volunteering and through my civil service with it. So I think there's a lot of people who have similar stories, so. So we tried to.
That's my very modest friend who's a Marine Corps vet.
That's right.
The estimated impact to town revenue, and I think, I just want to highlight it, revenue, because these aren't things that are costs, based upon our current membership that we would see as potentially eligible. We've got 16 residents in Fire that are in town and 11 that are out of town. So just to give you an idea as to why we really feel it's important to have things like the pool passes, the dump passes, whatever, and EMS is 28 residents and 11 non-residents. So if you did the abatement at, I believe it was 1,500, Phil, is this was based on? Or is this the thousand, this?
Yeah, 1,500.
Yeah, the total impact to revenue, $66,000, for what we were just saying is such an important part of our community, particularly in times like these.
The Fire Commission, this is Jack Warner, is fully supportive of this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it.
All right, so I'll pause and stop sharing there, so everyone can see everyone's smiling faces again.
Russ, can I ask a question?
Certainly, of course.
How many more volunteers are we looking to recruit in Fire and in EMS? As many as we can, or is there some number?
We've always, you know, it's funny, we've always said that it would be the optimal, what we'd love to have is 40, 50 volunteers. It's not feasible. So the reality is, we're never going to find that many, just based upon everything that's around us and the people who, I would be very happy to see that. So to be honest with you, as many as we can get, because in the fire service, and I'm sure it's with EMS, there's a certain level of attrition. Let's be realistic, some people try it, and the first time they put a mask on and go into a burning building, go, nope, not for me. And there's no fault with that whatsoever. But it does mean that the number of people that we keep beyond five years, we've lost probably three-quarters of our people. So we have to keep feeding the machine, or else we won't sustain.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, what is your attrition rate?
I don't know specifically, but I can tell you roughly, we lose our probationary or our new members. We lose probably half of them in the first year, maybe a little less than that. Then five years is the point where they really are becoming, at least in Fire, and Phil, I'll let you talk on your side, but five years where they're really starting to be able to become a lieutenant, which is the first level of a leader in the organization. And then by that point, you've probably lost three-quarters of your people. So the long tail to it, and it takes a lot of, the amount of hours in training and certifications to become an officer and move is tremendous. And that's why it's so important we get, I hate to say it, as many as we can, so at least our odds of getting those. We obviously have a lot of activity, we have a fantastic relationship with our career staff. So we have a warm and welcoming environment, we're very lucky in that regard. So it's a product of, we just need, we need to get the message out there and show that the town is equally committed to its volunteers.
From the EMS side, on that slide, which we put together several months back, I think it showed 39 current riding members. I think we've made a few active since then, but we'd really like to have at least 50 in order to be able to cover shifts without asking people to do additional time. Most, but probably not everyone knows the kind of hours we ask for our volunteer EMT. So they, in general, put in about 60 hours a month. So it's a pretty substantial commitment right now. As you can imagine, we're asking people to do additional shifts to make sure we're covered. That's not sustainable on a long-term basis. So, yeah, I'd like to have at least 10 additional active riding members to make it kind of more livable for the folks we've got.
Is there anything that you rejected and didn't put on the list that you think would be meaningful to help?
The free card Russ kind of wanted, I said probably would have lied. No, you know, I don't think so. I mean, Russ, unless you can think of something, but, you know, as you saw, we looked at what the other towns are doing. There were a couple of things there that we just didn't think were practical for New Canaan. But, no. The only other one is, you know, some towns actually have a structure that is kind of the equivalent of a pension, if you will. So based on number of years people volunteer, they've got a payment that only starts when they retire from this kind of service. We don't think that would particularly work here. Generally, it has to be a very long career for that to kick in anyhow. So it's the only one I can think of.
Yeah, the other ones that other groups and other organizations have done include things like they pay reimbursed gas mileage. And Phil and I talked about these. It's such an administrative burden on us then, to try and instill it and keep track of it, and then whether you're giving them a check card, or whether you're going, they're going to the Town Highway Department to fill up, which would be nightmarish. So we picked these because based on our discussions with our membership, there were ones, particularly, like, you know, as much as it sounds, we're proud of our town, the people who live in Stanford and Norwalk, who are voluntarily risking their lives to work in this town, for them to be able to take their kids to the New Canaan Pool, which is a beautiful facility, would mean a lot, you know? And I think those have impact to them.
What's the next step in this process?
Well, I think the answer to that is, you know, this was just an introduction to the whole community, and we're back with Chairman Carl in the Ordinance Committee to move forward on the draft wording and eventually move it to an ordinance, hopefully, before the end of the fiscal year.
Between now and July 1?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Okay, just clarifying. Go ahead, Robin, I think you were next.
Yeah, no, I just had the, yeah, I'm on. The training is all paid by the volunteers, correct? Until they meet a certain point of time, and then they can get their money back. It's not, the town's not paying for their training.
So the way it works for Fire, and I think EMS is the same, is they pay out of pocket for their certification exam, which runs about $1,000. Provided they pass that exam, then we reimburse them for that. We provide them the equipment that they need, the PPE that they need to do their jobs. But they have, and in the world of Fire, they're not going to do this class until they, and probably six months on average anyways. We don't send people to this class until we've had a chance to vet them as well, and also see that, give them an opportunity to do the skills beforehand to see if it's something they actually enjoy doing. But then, once that's done, after they've paid the thousand out of pocket, then we reimburse them. And that's tough, I will be honest, for our younger members, which make up a large percentage of our members, they're newer members, the men and women who want to become career firefighters, coming fresh out of high school, or after college, or whatever it might be, $1,000 out of pocket is tough, usually mom and dad pay it, and hope that the volunteer passes the class, which obviously, it's our mission to make sure that they pass and that our training officers help them. Phil?
Yeah, and somewhere here, so people pay themselves for the training, and then if they remain as active member for a year, we reimburse that. Reimbursement is, comes out of our contribution money, so not out of the town.
So John, can I speak for one sec? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So we had a great review with Phil and Russ in our subcommittee meeting, and they brought us up to speed on this. And we agreed that the next step would be, after we presented to the council, I think a small group of us would like to present to the Board of Finance to keep them in the loop on this, because they haven't heard it yet as well. And as soon as they're able to hear it, we'd like to go ahead and draft, you know, the language of the ordinance, providing they give us the green light. I just wanted to hear from them as well.
Do you have any sense, Steve Carl, what the total cost of what you're recommending to the Board of Finance is, at least in the first year or so?
You know, I think the guys could answer that better, but the numbers were very, very small that we were talking about. I think they capped it out tonight on that slide. Maximum, if everybody claimed everything that was available, it would be $86,000, which I doubt you'd ever get to that kind of number, but Russ, maybe you can answer that.
Yeah, 66, and we don't actually consider it a cost, because it's an abatement. It's not, it's just a drop in revenue. The passes, dump passes, even if you do parking, none of those things are incurring an additional cost in anything. They're facilities that are already running and existing, which is part of our reasoning as well, when we thought of those things that would work well for both organizations.
Yeah, to be clear, it's strictly a recruitment or retention issue. It's not actually costing dollars. It's a revenue cost, but it's not an actual cost. So that's why, I just want the Board of Finance to weigh in on it as well.
Penny, have a question. Is this going to be similar to the tier or disabled tax abatement, where the funds actually get absorbed in the difference between being budgeted and actually receive taxes, so that it is not a budgeted item? It is, you know, incurred within that little amount of money, and the difference is in the taxes?
We believe the answer for you, Penny, is yes, that it's a reduction in revenue. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I think.
John, it's Mike. Russ and Phil, just real briefly, can you just expand a little bit right now on any lessons learned so far in terms of the shortage in staffing on the volunteer side in relation to, you know, the virus response?
Yeah, I can jump on that probably more kind of directly with EMS than Fire, at least so far. But been actually very happy with the continued commitment of our EMS corps. I've got four folks who took medical leave related to the concern. Those be either a couple of folks that had underlying medical conditions, and a couple that had children that were, you know, medically kind of vulnerable. Other than that, everyone else has continued to jump in and continue to do this, obviously with some additional risks they're taking on for themselves. So it's been, you know, wonderful to actually see it happen.
Okay, thank you.
One last question. How is our stock of PPE for them when they're dealing with people that may have the virus? Are they protected?
Absolutely. You know, I'll call for mutual aid before I put any of our folks on a call without the appropriate PPE, just to be clear. But we've been working with PD and FD and Mike Handler to look for all kinds of procurement angles, and have actually been very successful with that. So N95 masks, which everyone I'm sure has read about more than they ever want to. I've got at least a six-month supply of those. That's with a projection of use going up. So we're actually in good shape with that. And both Norwalk and Stanford Hospital have agreed, after I approached them, that they actually will backfill any PPE used on a transport to their hospitals as we need it. So knock on wood, we're in good shape.
Thank you.
I think we handled Fire and Emergency Medical Services together. So if there's nothing further, we'll move on to Wavine House renovation.
Hey, John, before those guys leave, we should really just say thank you for everything they're doing right now. I mean, those guys are the first guys through the door. So thank you guys for everything you're doing, both Russ and Phil. I don't know if anybody else is watching, but we really want to thank you for everything you're doing right now. It's incredible what's going on out there.
I appreciate it.
And thanks. We appreciate your continued support.
Thank you. Okay, is Lee Cromwell here?
She's here. So is Mitchell Levy and Bill Ossman. Could you unmute all three?
We're trying to unmute.
Okay, I can hear you.
I'm here.
Okay, yes. Hi, this is Lee Cromwell with Stowe Architects. We're here to talk to you about Wavine House Accessibility Program. Joined by Mitchell Levy, who is the President of Stowe Architects. I'm going to try and share my screen. There we go. Can everybody see that? Hello?
You need to share.
I did.
It should be in the bottom center of your screen, share, screen, green button.
Yep, got it.
And when I click that, it gives me a choice between the desktop or the whiteboard or a couple of other places.
Right, I'm clicking my presentation.
I think you have to click on desktop.
Click on it, then hit share in the lower right corner. It's also available on the tablets and on the town website.
But it won't be available to the folks on Channel seventy-nine or the public, which is probably interested.
It's on the town website.
Lee, was it a number three? Stowe three?
Yeah.
I have the PDF.
You can put it up.
Well, I clicked the share. It doesn't seem to be doing.
There we go.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. You'll just have to tell me to advance the slide, I guess.
So are you using the PowerPoint or the PDF?
PDF. I only had the PDF, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Well, that works. So anyway, I did the introductions. I think I'm joined by Tiger, as you heard, and Bill Ossman. This slide is sort of a summary of this accessibility history. It actually goes back quite a bit in time. Wavine House dates back to the accessibility assessment of it for at least twenty years, best I could find. It went at least to 2010. They did a master plan. They had elevator manufacturers in. They had contractors called in to review elevator locations. So it's been going on for a long time. And this chart shows the more recent involvement of individuals and committees in efforts to address the project that we're talking about now. This is a framework of how we coordinate. We have a town in New Canaan, they have Stowe Architects. We have the Wavine House Renovation Advisory Committee, and the people on that committee are listed. We also had involvement with the building department, the fire marshal, the town coast consultant, who's Christopher Lau. He's the former state building official. We also had the involvement of the Connecticut Economic and Community Development, which is the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office. We worked with Todd Levine there. Kevin Moynihan was the one that first formed the Wavine House Renovation Advisory Committee. And I think that was in late 2008. We also worked with Tiger and Bill Ossman. And as of today, we've had eight meetings from the end of 2018 to January 2020. We last met with the Selectmen's Advisory Committee on Buildings and Infrastructure, who their expertise is the financial oversight. I want to mention that before this committee, there was another committee that was formed in 2016. The Wavine House Committee was formed by Rob Malazi in March of 2016. And the committee was charged with assessing the revenue, the comparisons with other kinds of facilities, fees, alternatives, the operations of the building. And actually, some of the members that you see listed for the WHRIC were also on that previous committee. Next slide. Can I do it?
No, you can't touch. Yeah, it's just my screen.
Can I control it?
No, it's only me.
Okay. Anyway, the goals of the most recent committee, the Wavine House Renovation Advisory Committee, these were the goals that were stated at the time of their formation, to review proposed renovation plans for ADA compliance, which included the exterior building access, the interior access routes, the access to the second floor via an elevator, toilet room access, the location, and plumbing quantities. Our first meeting was in October of 2018. No preconceived notions or anything were presented. It was just an introductory meeting for all of us to meet each other. We talked about lines of communication, guidelines for accessibility. We reviewed the federal legislation. We reviewed the Historic Preservation Act of 1966. The committee was actually given a bit of homework to read in regard to the last two guidelines. We reviewed the design and construction schedule. And then we talked about additional coordination meetings. And we set our next meeting to review design ideas to achieve accessibility. So, next slide. Taking one step back again, though, the town issued an RFP in the summer of 2015. The RFP was to do a building investigation and evaluation. KSQ was awarded the project, which is the firm I was previously employed with. This is the cover of the report. To the right, you see the table of contents. It was very thorough. It went into all aspects of the building, from code to the structural systems, to the building systems, what's going on with the exterior and the interior. We met with the Use Committee to review what they had determined. There was also a budget analysis. And then at the end of the report, there were also some concept diagrams of what we might be thinking about. It really just proposed next steps for, as it says, a schematic design criteria. If you're going to go forward, what would be the next steps? We did several printings of this report. It was over an inch thick. And Bill distributed the report to the committees. Ultimately, the first project under that was the roof project, which I did with KSQ Design.
You even took us up onto the roof.
I'm sorry?
You even took us up onto the roof and made us look at the roof.
That's right. And we had several meetings about that as well. And that did conclude under budget, which was a great thing. Anyway, so next slide. The present project with the current Wavine House Committee, we were tasked with the, by this time, I had joined another firm, Stowe Architects, which Mitchell, the president, is online as well. And the town, I guess, decided it would just be more efficient if I could help lead it forward because I knew the project, I knew the building. I'd been working on it since 2015. So anyway, the next step was to look at three accessibility issues. A toilet facilities, plumbing based on the occupant load of the building and where the toilet facilities would be located. The second project was to gain second floor access. And the third project was to improve the west porch entry. The front entry under the port cochere really had too many steps to make anything really viable. In the schematic report, conditions report, we had worked out a scenario where it might be done, but it was horribly expensive and wasn't really the best route. Everybody decided the best way to improve it was to make an upgraded main entry at the west porch. So anyway, we started with these three architectural goals. And when we had our first meeting with the committee, this is what we discussed. However, the course of events, other items came to the forefront. We had met extensively and had extensive conversations. And Chris Lau, our building enforcement, building code consultant, had written many memos, talked with us, met in person. He guided us and stressed that all areas need compliance, that need to be addressed. He mentioned about how you run the risk of lawsuits if you don't take all of them into account at once. Number four is what this is about, the Loja, the ADA access. I hope you can understand where we're at. We're at the covered area outside of the main room in Wavine Hall. You can sort of see from, well, from both photographs, you have a five-inch step up to the Loja. And then you have another five-inch step up to the main house. So that's ten inches. So the committee wanted to address how we would resolve that. In reviewing code and assembly uses of the building, we had discussions with the fire marshal and the building official. I might mention that their new codes were current, that were current in 2018 was the IBC 2015. And those put even more emphasis on a building being completely up to grade. The building is an assembly use, and both the fire marshal and the building official insisted that we needed to bring, the picture you see to the right, the stairway up to code. This is technically a fire escape, and a fire escape is not code compliant. It doesn't meet the riser and the tread height. There's a number of issues, rails, landing size, number of issues that it doesn't meet. So they said that if we were going to go forward with any projects, we would need to address that. So these are two additional things that we did not originally anticipate. Moving on to how we were going to address the three projects, the toilet rooms, the elevator, and the exterior access. We put the toilet room in phase one. We divided these projects into three phases. They divided themselves fairly efficiently as far as when you put projects out to bid. They fell into categories that were easy to separate. So the first thing we addressed were the toilet rooms. We looked at toilet rooms throughout the facility. We looked at the first floor. The only large area that was really, it wasn't even adequate in size, but it has, previously has plumbing and toilets, are the ladies' rooms, right as you come in the lobby. That wasn't really sufficient for what we needed for the number of toilets for both men and women for the facility. And as I sort of animated before, our plumbing counts are based on assembly use of the building, how many people the building could hold if the building was completely used. And the building department allowed us to separate the second from the first. We only, we didn't have to do simultaneous use. We could do one at Florida time to determine our plumbing counts. So, but the largest one, of course, was the first floor because we had to include the terraces with that. And when the committee and the architect looked at the number of scenarios of where we might locate it, the area you see circled in red was where we targeted. If you see where there's a toilet and some sinks, that's a major plumbing wall that goes all the way to the basement. And so we targeted this area as a place to examine. We went through many iterations. I just have three scenarios here. We looked at raising the floor to maybe make plumbing easier. But that really only created more issues because then what do you do with the head of the door? What do you do with the head of the window? What do you do with the millwork, the floor base? What do you do with the floor? The one on the bottom left was one scenario. We took sort of that basic configuration and moved the toilets and sinks around all over the place to try and see which one the committee liked the best. We also tried the one on the right, logicating different components in different areas. When it came down to the final result, we ended up that area and the enlarged plan you see in the right is what the committee selected that they'd like to go forward with. So then, we also had a toilet on the first floor. It's existing. The box in red on the right is currently a men's toilet room. Well, when it's an assembly space, you need, in a new building, you need to have a family toilet room. This was added to the program because it wasn't necessary. So it's just an assembly space, and it's already there. So we reconfigured it. And the plan, we went through a lot of iterations of that as well. There's not so much you can do in a small space like that. You know, you move the toilet around, the sink around. But this is the layout we determined. Since it's a family bathroom, it also has the diaper changing table. The next part we addressed, phase two, was the elevator. Now, the numbers you see, one through five, two committees ago reviewed this and determined these five locations. KSQ was invited, the firm I was previously with, was invited to a few of these meetings, but we were really not part of the committee discussion. When we joined the group with the most recent committee, they had narrowed it down to one, two, and three. But the committee went back and did a reevaluation of all these locations. They determined that, well, KSQ was asked to comment on one, three, and two. One is the locate in the elevator and the location of the current women's toilet room. However, it destroys significant historic fabric in the main room with the murals, the paneling, and all. To have an elevator door there, the committee determined wasn't a prime spot. Two is the area of the old baggage elevator, and that shaft is not sufficient. Major masonry walls would have to be reconstructed. So that was not cost efficient. And we eliminated that one. Three was in the area of the old stair, which seemed to have the less constraints. We also took another look at four, which is outside of the building. But this really impacts, I should step back and say that since that time, the building is now in the National Regent of Historic Places. And one of the prime things that they noted when they listed the building was that it was a gentleman's estate, and there were grand views through the house, out to the fields. And that was one of the significant features of this building. So four had, besides that, other issues. It added to the square feet of the house. If we went over the square feet of the house, we might kick us into some other categories of having to bring all other kinds of things up to code. It was complicated in how you might actually construct that. Five was a series of closets that are used for electric. I think one's a safe off of the dining room. Five was a series of closets that are used for electric. I think one's a safe off of the dining room. And that was determined that the closets did not stack with the closets on the second floor or the basements. So that and it wasn't really large enough. So that eliminated that possibility. But that left us with location three, which was what the committee decided to pursue. Just to give you a sense of the timing, these are little excerpts of memos and letters that went back and forth about the time that, you know, January of 1918, 2018 was when K S Q addressed the three locations and gave our comment about the pros and cons of each. In June of 2018, the committee did a similar thing. They had a color coded marked up plan and they too were doing a similar analysis. This is the the first Wavine House Committee. So ultimately, committee and we decided that the main stair alcove was the best place to put this. I mentioned in one of the earlier slides that we also had involvement with the State Historic Preservation Office through Connecticut. First, they were very, when we spoke with them on the phone, they were very adamant, oh, no, you've got to find a place outside of the building. But when they came down, they met with the architect, the the building people, people like Bill Ossman and Tiger, the first Leitman was there, the fire marshal, the building official. I mean, the poor guy felt really overwhelmed. There were probably 20 people in the room and him. By the time we went through the whole analysis and explained to him, he was in total agreement that we were doing the right thing. They use the Secretary of the Standards, he used the Secretary of Standards guides for relatable rehabilitating buildings. There's number nine is that when you add on to a building, you shouldn't copy something from the past, like we were sort of going down the road of, well, maybe it would kind of look like some an elevator that was done in 1912. But he said, no, you've you've got to distinguish it. It's got to be different from the surrounding structure. It needs to have its own character and be distinguishable. It wasn't built in 1912, so it needs to distinguish itself as you know, 21st century. So you see a rendering image of what it is what we've drawn into drawings that are currently being bid. Oh, then phase three was is that fell into the site venue. And what you're looking at here is the west porch access. The diagrams on the the far left is pretty much what's there for the ramp part. As I mentioned, we were placing the ramp because the rails, the slope, the landings weren't code compliant. So first we went in and, you know, we put back something similar to what's there now, only code compliant. And then we made the access to the main door more ADA compliant. The photograph in the middle is what's there now. The door is too narrow, the slope's too steep. We tried several iterations of that of how we would approach and ramp up to the door. We had another, we had a five inch difference we had to make up. The kit, the committee was very unhappy with something that looked like a ramp. So they asked us to investigate. Everyone knows how it's a gradual walk into the front, then the new front door of Town Hall. If you'll remember, it used to be five steps up to the back door. And we changed the grading in the parking lot so that we could build a sidewalk that was a one and 20 slope, which now becomes a sidewalk. It's not a ramp. So the diagram on the right is what you see. It's a one and 20 slope. It's a sidewalk up to the west porch and then into into the main house. Again, it was, you know, not what was originally envisioned in the budget. Limestone, bluestone plantings, just to to get it to do the one and 20 and not be a ramp. It's a major structural project.
What does that mean? It's a sidewalk, not a ramp?
I went into ramp to be ADA compliant. For every 12 inches you go, you can go up one inch to be compliant.
Right.
So you know, kind of the slope of an ADA compliant ramp.
Right.
But when it drops to one inch to 20 inches, it becomes a sidewalk. It's a lot more gradual. It doesn't look like a ramp at all.
You also don't need
You don't need rails. You don't need handrails. So on the right part of this, there is a bed that's built up, you know, so you don't fall off. And we're doing, we're changing by about two feet. So I mean, we have sections and all that that show all this. If anybody would like additional information.
The difference between a sidewalk and a ramp is a sidewalk is wider and has
It's it's less of a slope. It's flatter.
A ramp requires, and a ramp requires handrails, John. A sidewalk will not. So there for this rendering of this look, it'll just be a gradual walk into the building instead of having handrails on either side and looking like a ramp. It actually just looked like a walkway into the structure or onto the porch.
I guess I'm looking at the length of ramp A and ramp B and it looks about the same length.
It actually starts further out. See, see where the triangle is of planting on the right? The sloping starts much further out, exactly at the point where you you come off the sidewalk from the parking lot.
Okay.
Leah, a quick question about the dimension of the ramp there.
I can't hear you, Steve.
Can you hear me now?
Better.
A quick question about the dimension of that ramp. You've got a width there that looks as though it's narrower than that step or that landing. Is there a reason why you narrow that down? Because at times there's a lot of traffic that would go through there at a big event.
Um, it's it's actually about five feet. Maybe even six. I'd have to go back and look.
I mean, you don't have to answer it now. Just a question. It's a question. It looks
It's actually quite wide. I know it's hard to tell with none of this at scale.
Okay, you can move on. That was just an observation.
It's five feet wide.
And that's considered, maybe Tiger, is that a five foot sidewalk? Is that a normal sized sidewalk? So two people walk side by side, I guess.
Yeah, it actually four feet is is sort of a minimum when you have two people.
Thank you.
Okay, now, in an earlier slide, we mentioned the Loja and how that wasn't part of the original project. And we went through a lot of iterations on how we were going to deal with that. They want the all the ones on the left were were various, you know, trying different kind of ramp configurations, just going, you know, leaving the Loja where it is, just go building a concrete ramp, going straight in the door, doing some other scenarios. Granted, it wasn't very graceful and didn't really do justice to the old building. So the committee asked us to look at raising the Loja. And actually, Steve Binco came up with this great idea of using the planter bed that's already there and doing our little ramp up in the middle. We still have set steps on the side, but we have the ramp in the middle hidden by planting that gets somebody in a wheelchair or whatever up to the Loja. And the the Loja slopes that an eighth of an inch per foot. So by the time you get to the door, it's ADA accessible. And I think in the photograph, you can see you've got the five inch step up at the door. And then over to the right through the archway, you have another five inch step down. I mean, so this is a pretty significant item. We got historic Ludovici tile on the floor that's in a custom pattern. You can see how it varies. There's banding. There's a significant, you know, little two by two inch tile that's surrounded with bigger tile. Ludovici will customize this. It's a custom order. And as actually is one of the things the state said, if we wanted to do this, we had to do make it look like the original. One of the other things the committee was concerned about was there have been on occasion, some events that the you need to be down from the terrace to the lawn. We had lots of discussions about this. We did work out a scenario that the elevation wasn't too bad. It kind of blended with the terrace rail and, you know, we'd we would have been duplicating that and everything. But then the the committee with the guidance of the code consultant agreed that because it so rarely happens that when you have an event on the lawn, you could do a a custom or a temporary type of way of getting people to the lawn. So we we didn't pursue that additionally because the committee decided it wasn't necessary. I think that just about concludes things that we've covered.
Which part was not necessary?
Getting from the main terrace down to the lawn because those events happen so seldomly. You know, you know, like when the conservis, the guard, the Wavine Conservancy had the big event with the tent.
Right.
You know, they they technically needed to get someone in a wheelchair from the terrace down to where the party was. But the events happen so seldom that we that the committee and the code consultant concluded that it wasn't necessary to continue investigating this because a temporary means could be provided. So in summary, on the exterior site work, wet support inch entry became significantly more involved. The Loja ADA access was added. And then we had the emergency egress of that fire stair, fire escape that we had to make conform to a real exit stair. Those three items were much above what was originally envisioned. Oh, any questions?
Anyone?
Should I close this or we might need to go back?
So can you explain to me what the phasing is now?
I'm sorry?
Leah, can you explain to me what the phasing is now? How we're going to do this in steps, right? We're not going to we're not going to take the whole steak in one bite, right?
Okay, well, we thought it was extremely important from the town's benefit to have one contractor. Everything we're doing touches on an historic building and we needed to have a contractor that understood how you how you work with historic building. We just couldn't go out and hire Joe Blow, the the site man to do the the site work. So we we packaged it as one bid document, but with three phases. So you'll have one G C, but it's broken into those three projects. Tyra, Billy, you want to add anything to that?
You're exactly right. The feeling is that we have one contractor and then we would phase in the additional phases as we went forward as funding was available and as as work progressed. But we could stop it if you do, but in essence, it's an entire package deal. It then brings the entire building into compliance.
Over what period of time?
About a year and a half, two years. The first part will be working on the bathrooms, but while the bathrooms are being worked on, there's a long lead time on the elevator, about eight months. So the thought is you can work on the bathrooms while you're having the lead time for the elevator, do the elevator and then work your way out of the building with the Loja, the fire escape and the and the and the western entrance. We also have to phase that in and try to work around Steve's schedule for weddings and banquets and what have you. So but the feeling is that if we're working on the second floor, we won't necessarily be a problem for anything that was happening on the first floor. When we did the roof, every the contractor was noted that he would have to be packed up and leave the the site by noon time on Friday, not to come back till Monday, have to move your equipment, close everything off and make sure that no one knew that it was actually a construction site while they were there. And we were actually able to have venues and events during that entire construction time with virtually no complaints.
Would we be able to save money if we were able to stop the events for some period of time?
To give them, well, we did, we we thought about that, given the entire building in one shot. We could, the the project's out to bid right now. So when the numbers come back in again, I think they're on a, unfortunately, they come back on April 17th, which is just after after the vote. But we'll know then and then at that point in time, certain there's going to be some give and take with the contractors via far as what might he might see from value engineering point. And if there is a substantial amount of cost savings for giving him the entire building and letting him go forward with it, then we could certainly discuss that alternative.
I might also add that initially we have three really good contractors interested. In the case of the roof, we had several contractors that weren't qualified, but were still bidding. In this case, all three of them are qualified in my estimation. And when we met for our walkthrough, we did put it out to them that if they had any ideas for cost savings, they were welcome to include that in their bid.
And our good friend Joe Palladino told me today that this is a good time to go out to bid.
That's what I hear too.
I have a question. So so Leah and the group, I know this isn't part of your mission or wasn't part of your mission, but you guys are so intimately familiar with not only the design of the building, but its heart, its functionality, its charm. Have you have you given any thought to how we might generate more revenue, like enough revenue to cover the cost of these changes?
Well, I I think, um, actually, I think Penny Young was the chairman of the that first committee that was kind of had dealt with use and investigated other clubs and what kind of revenue they were getting. And I think one of the things they determined, if you just made the building all of it functional. And they they did conclude, I believe, Penny can chime in, and I don't have it quite right, that they might raise the rates a bit. They we they determined they were low compared to other towns around. That the revenue could go up.
That's right, Leah. There there are actually a number of ways to use that building. From a marketing standpoint, the building is not really marketed, professionally marketed. Our rates are lower than surrounding facilities. So that could be more of a generator in the revenue. But I think you really need to do a much more in-depth analysis that was done by the original original committee and looking at the building. I know Denver Wadi is speaking with me about wanting to walk through that building again with an eye to what changes and he says relatively minor changes to be under the building to make it more marketable. And I think that, you know, with him and others who have some experience with designing buildings for larger community use would be a next step.
Do does anybody have a ballpark number on how much revenue we generate now?
Steve should be on.
You know, Steve Binco should be on.
Okay.
Tom, we bring in about, but we on a good year, we bring in about $140,000. You can do one event per day on a weekend. You can't do more than one event. And you basically have a Friday, Saturday, Sunday rentals. And you've got really May 1 to October to November 1, November 2, for a second week in November for your rentals. You know, you'd make it a few in the winter, but most of them are going to be, say, May 1 to through through November 15th for your rental market.
Steve, have you got the big idea for how we could make that double that revenue number?
Different time, you may get raise your rates, but I think we're we're fairly competitive with the the buildings similar to ours in the area. We're similar to Ridgefield, Varian and you know, we could, we could look at rental fees. fees, that's probably the way you're going to do it.
This is Penny again. One thing that was talked about is the use by more community organizations in this building, which is a 25,000 square foot building that is essentially empty during the week. And, you know, we've got a lot of rooms and a lot of closets and a lot of old bathrooms that are now not going to be used as bathrooms and can be storage rooms for organizations and their equipment. So that could be a generator as well.
Maria, go ahead.
How much square footage is on the second floor? And I know I was told the Board of Ed needs 9,000 square feet, but do we know that for sure? Is there a way to make use of the second floor instead of paying rent?
Maria, we looked at that and it was too small for their needs. This Steve Banker, we looked at that, we explored that with Brian Lutzey and their committee, and it was too small for their needs.
But how much square footage is on the second?
Plus the wall structure and all of the building just didn't conform to that kind of use. I didn't comment on the structure of the building, but it's a steel frame with heavy masonry bearing walls and all the floors are concrete.
So how much is usable on the second floor?
You got, the second floor, you have one, two, three, four, five, six rooms on the second floor. But they're not, we looked at it, I looked at it with Brian Lutzey, it was too small for their needs. It would, it'd be a lot smaller than they have right now. They couldn't, even we moved the recreation office out of there, then.
They're not office spaces, they're more meeting room spaces.
So can they be used, like the library is planning to add meeting room space? Is that something?
We do that already. We make the second floor available. We have one big room to the second floor, which gets used by, by several groups for meetings once or twice a month. We have one room that gets used for, for two, for the bridal, we run out for weddings, the two rooms used for bridal parties, and there's one room is a small conference room. Other than that, and our offices are on the second floor. Now, one of our offices is going to have to move and consolidate because of the bathroom additions, so we're going to take one, a second room away of the second floor because it could be easier for our office space.
Actually, I don't think I've ever seen that many people in, the rooms on either end that face south are about the same size. And the code calculation worked out to the, code says they hold 50 people. I've never seen that many people in there, maybe 35 or 40 in the yellow room. But they hold a significant number of folks.
Steve, on the, on the conference rooms, how are those, how are those allocated today? Who can use them? What hours are they available? How is it coordinated?
Right now, a new kid in nonprofit organization or town, a town organization can use the floor, the conference room, the second floor, it seats about 12 people. The yellow room, we set up with the loading tables, you can put maybe 20 people around a square table for a meeting.
But if you have just chairs, that holds more than that.
Yeah, you hold this, the yellow room with just chairs will hold about 35 people.
What hours is it available for people to use?
We're open 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Okay, so nonprofits cannot use it at night at all?
Monday, Monday, Monday through Thursday nights, the house can be used from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM for a meeting. And we do have groups using it weeknights.
And how do I arrange that if I'm a nonprofit?
Call, you call the recreation office and we can look at dates and what your needs are and how big, how many people you want to have, and we can work our space out for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't forget that there's the bank of rooms above the kitchen wing that could rent the office.
That's correct, but we have, there's no plan to renovate that this time to offices.
Putting that on the table for thinking that there is space there that can be used.
John, this is Christina. I'd like to just make a comment regarding the cost of the project. Regarding the subcommittee that met to, or the committee that met prior to the first election advisory committee, there were many questions regarding the direction of the design and the cost. And both the town and members of the committee felt that the, we had to wait until the appraiser that had been, or estimator that had been retained by the architects was finished. Several months passed, those numbers were never given to us, supposedly the estimator was still working on them. To hear that this is an additional $1.8 million in addition to the $1 million that was previously approved is unacceptable. There was much work that's been submitted and proposed that may be beautiful, but it's not necessary in order to meet handicap accessibilities. And we are in a time right now where every dollar counts and unnecessary spending should be curtailed.
A quick question, sort of a follow-up on that. I was trying to find meeting minutes that talked about this particular shift. I know originally Christina and Penny, it was a year, it's a couple of years ago when I first was on town council, and the first phase of this Wavine ADA was supposed to be the birdcage elevator. It was a big deal and it was a million bucks, so we all argued about it. And that, you know, I remember that quite vividly. And now, you know, we're hearing about the 1.8, and I went back after our last meeting and tried to find minutes, you know, minutes for certainly either our original infrastructure committee or the Wavine renovation committee. There are no minutes for that committee posted for 2019. So to me, that, then they didn't meet, right? Or if they did meet, there are no minutes. So I know there was, I don't know how we were supposed to find that. I think this 1.8 might have been somewhat more palatable, but it came as a shock, you know.
But you have to understand that the 1.8 is on top of the $1 million, which brings the total project to 2.8 million.
No, I know, I agree with you on that. I'm just saying, I just could, I found no documentation that said this was even coming.
And at no point was there a presentation made to alert either the committee, or at least everybody in the committee, if some, if some knew, not all knew, that this project was way over budget.
Tiger, what would be the, what would be the financial implication of waiting? If the town council decided that we like the design and these are the changes we do want to make to the building, but we didn't want to do it now, is there any, is there any cost consideration to putting this off one year?
Only in the fact that, as Sven mentioned, you know, probably right now, everybody's going to be hungry, or at least the next couple of months, as this crisis passes, you're going to see people very, very hungry for work, especially since this work will be, you know, going on for a year. The contractors that are bidding on it understand the climate that they're in and they're hungry. So you can put it off, there'll definitely be a financial consideration. I think it'll just be an increase, not a decrease. Then you, you also run the risk of it's, one more year, you'll pass the 30th anniversary of the enactment of the law, and your crown jewel will still no longer be accessible to everyone in the community.
Could I just say one thing? The architect did chip in, and with every committee decision, we commented, this is going to be more expensive. We didn't have a definitive number, but we said it's going to be more expensive.
Almost triple the price of what was previously approved. I don't find it to be acceptable at any level. The building will not have any AC, so that's another big issue. So we're spending 2.8 million in no air conditioning in the building, which is one of the biggest detractors to renting the building during the summer for weddings.
Christina, so then what is your proposal?
To go back to the drawing board.
What drawing board?
And to make the building affordable to do, to upgrade.
If you go back to the 2016 report, there is a budget in there.
What does it say?
The budget was crazy.
It had a lot of other components. It had an outdoor tent, it had outdoor toilets, it had pie in the sky kind of dreams. So it's not really a relevant number. Like, I think the number in the budget for the roof was 3 million, and it came in significantly under that.
Tiger, did I hear you correctly that the budgets, I'm sorry, the bids will not be returnable until, did you say April 17?
That's correct. April 17.
Do we have any idea how many firms are bidding on it?
We have three very interested parties right now. One, the, one of which was the one who did the roof for us, who is very, very, very good and understands the building and understands the nature of the work. We have three very credible bidders looking at it.
You know, it would be really great to see what their bids are to help guide us here. I mean, my personal opinion is that I am very surprised about the cost increase, but I've been listening closely to his presentation. I think that, like you've said a couple of times, Tiger, you know, the vendors out there, these contractors are going to be, you know, kind of really looking for any work that they can get and may drive the cost down. And I think that's really relevant to us to have as we make, as we consider this, this request. And given everything that's out there right now, like we've been saying, it's, we're in a whole new kind of paradigm now. So I think that having those bids would be very, very helpful to understand just exactly what the cost is that we're looking at.
Well, let me chime in on the, on the timing issue there, Mike. I've, I've been thinking about timing overall for the budget process, and one of the specifics that I was going to recommend tonight is that we actually reset our deadline for capital projects that aren't pure maintenance. So that would be in this category, and there are others. To say that we would actually take until April 30th to give ourselves a deadline that matches with the government's special relief connection with a coronavirus. And so that could be an advantage here, that we would, we would not have to make a decision if we defer to that date until after we got the bids in.
Tom, let me make a comment. You know, this is not the final decision because you have to authorize a bond resolution later on. This is a fifth year project for renovations to a building that will last another 50 to 100 years. And I would ask Leah, is there any way, Leah, we can stretch this project out over three or four years? Do the bathrooms, then the elevator, and then we get to the loafer and the other aspects in the fourth, fourth year?
Yeah, I think you could. I mean, that's definitely, it was nice how it just kind of divided into these discrete projects that one's not really related to another. Although, you know, when they're doing the bathrooms, they might be doing some electrical work or something like that. I could give you one case history, though. When I was doing the renovation at the Greenwich YMCA, that was done in phases. And we started on the phase that did not give access to the building. And the YMCA was sued because they, they didn't do the access first, and it, that it wasn't fast enough. Now, the person sued because they couldn't get into the 50-meter pool, you know, until two years down the road. So, you know, the lawsuit thing is just something to consider.
Who won?
The longer you put something out, the more you open the town to that risk.
I'm actually interested in, if the governor, if the last thing the governor said was that schools might not even open until this fall, it looks to me like this summer is not going to be a summer of entertaining at Wavine anyway. I would rather than stretch this out over several years, if I could see a way to save 20% off of your estimates by, by giving them unrestricted access to the building this summer, I would do it.
Steve, you already have weddings booked for the summer, don't you?
We have, we have events booked for the summer.
You know what? They're not going to happen.
They may not happen.
Then you're going to get sued.
They're not going to happen.
It's also a summer camp location for the summer.
We're not going to get sued for shutting down Wavine this summer. Are you kidding me? We're in a crisis.
Somebody's already got a wedding booked, they've got caterers booked, they've got bands booked, and you're going to tell them they can't have their event?
No, I'm not going to tell them, the governor's going to tell them.
Well, until it happens, you can't plan for it.
I mean, I hope they can get, I hope this all blows over in time for that wedding. But you know what? I'm not counting on it.
I just have a question regarding the ADA itself, with this historic designation that the property has. And I know it raises in the past, and again, in listening to the presentation, you know, when it's a historic designation, the ADA compliance, the measures taken to have it in compliance, it's to the maximum extent possible, right? And that's a phrase straight out of the ADA itself. So I just want to understand that the proposed renovations to Wavine that have been discussed this evening in this presentation, were the renovations falling within the category of to the maximum extent possible, or is it a more, or a more strict standard of it was not like a historic designated landmark? Because there are two different standards here, and I want to know which standard was applied in developing the renovations, the proposed renovations.
It was both. The federal guideline for Americans with Disability Act, a federal legislation, and it was also the Preservation Act of 1966. And we got the, the state Historic Preservation Office to give us a little leniency on some of it. So the historic part bended a little bit to the federal requirement.
Right, so there was a balance, when the ADA was enacted and throughout its interpretive history, there was a balance struck between, for properties that are just standard, regular, new construction, you know, something that's either coming online or has been around for, you know, however many decades, that does not have an historic designation. But structures that have historic designation, obviously there's an issue with, you know, retrofitting an historic structure to, you know, be up to date with modern technology for ADA compliance. So the balance that was struck in recognizing that was to put this phraseology in the regulations to the ADA that says when it's an historic designated structure, ADA compliance is done to the maximum extent possible. So there's two different standards at play within the ADA itself. So I, you know, what I'm getting at is, is that perhaps, and I don't know the answer to this, and that's what I need explained to me, is that, A, which standard was utilized in developing the renovation plan? And B, what, is there, was there an analysis conducted saying this is the renovation that is, would comply if this was not an historic designation versus this is a renovation that applies if it was to the, it is an historic designation and is to the maximum extent of possible? Because it's, it's a slightly lesser standard for an historic designation is what I'm getting at under the ADA. So the renovation, proposed renovations, I want to, I want to understand is, was it the higher standard or the slightly lower standard of the historic designation standard?
Well.
I would, I would say we started with the higher, the federal, but, I mean, the state let us not have to make compliance at the front door. They let us do it at the west porch. You know, that's kind of a give and take thing that they're, you know, it's still, they're going along with it historically, and the federal legislation is permitting us to do that. You know, it's making a little bit of an acceptance because of the building is historic.
Mike, we also hired a code consultant to actually help us, guide us through those processes as well. He was the former state head building inspector, Christopher Lau. So he helped us through that whole process to try to find out what the best way to navigate both regulations was.
Okay, that's helpful to know.
I'm still troubled that we, that we really, I'm still troubled that we really still don't have a use for this building. And by that, I mean, the, the plan in place for this year, the 2020, 2021, is about $110,000 to $115,000 of revenue with a cost of $150,000. While if, as we build things like ramps, etc., it would help if we knew whether this was going to be a venue that we were going to rent out for parties, or whether it was going to be offices, or what it was going to be. I mean, I can't imagine we get much more revenue for weddings than we currently are getting that. And why, why do I say that? It's not air-conditioned, and the $3 million. Secondly, it's broken up into three big rooms on the first floor, and if it's not a nice date, you don't have a place to put 200 people, and that's what people, that's what people are renting. And so I just think that we ought to figure out what we want to do with it. And so I just think that we ought to figure out what we want to do with it and then build it as opposed to build it and then wonder what to do with it.
What we're, what we're building, Rich, is not use of the building from a functional standpoint, but ADA compliance standpoint.
Well, that would be a huge mistake.
What, make it ADA compliant?
No, to not, to not design it for use.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that you can't get around the ADA compliance aspect because of the liability to the town of New Canaan.
I don't, I don't think you look at it that way. You know, we bought this building 52 years ago. $1.5 million for 297 acres and a mansion. And we haven't put all that much money into it in 52 years. Granted, we have a $2 million roof, which you're going to have to do a roof every 100 years on a slate building. And I think the building gets lots of use. And I think a lot of people appreciate the value that we have in the building. And to get ADA compliant, and then the only next step is do we want to replace the heating system at some point at our discretion or because it finally pops because it is an old system? But, you know, it's, it's a $25 million building. We have, almost have a zero cost basis in it.
Kevin, how do we get, how do we get a return for the, to get a return for the town for that? We need to either use it as a town building or we need to find a way to have somebody that can take it to its best and highest use. The real cost of this is going to be $5 or $6 million by the time we get it with air conditioning and heating in a condition that can actually be used from an ADA compliance standpoint.
And that number shouldn't offend us.
I didn't say it did, but, but that's equivalent to a $25 million building. But we're only getting, we're only getting usage of $110,000 this year. Plus five offices or something. I mean, you know, we're going to build a police station for $475 a square foot. And 35,000 square foot building, $475 a square foot should generate an awful lot of building. And I'm just suggesting that before, before we spend a lot of money on it, we figure out what we're going to do with it.
Most of our, most of our town buildings don't generate any revenue.
No, I know. And, and this doesn't have to either. If it's all used for offices or used for something else, it's vacant almost the whole time. I love it. I'd love to go into it. I like, I like owning it, but it's like owning a Dusenberg. Right? It just sits in the garage. It's pretty to look at.
That's, that's not fair, Rich. I mean, maybe you don't go there, but I think, I think it gets lots of use.
I'd agree with Kevin. I think the building does service as a public meeting space for the town and for organizations.
I think it's the envy of the talent around us.
This may not mean much, but it makes people happy.
And it's, and it's money that we're going to be able to get, we're going to get a good price on doing this construction work. And we're going to bond it. And we're going to bond it at a really good rate.
And we have another bite of the apple. You know, approving the budget for it doesn't mean you're going to do it. You got to approve the bond, the bond authorization. That'll be months down the road. We'll have a much better handle. And then if you, you know, I do think stretching it out over three or four years is an option because it's, it's been so long since we've been out of compliance. Another two, as long as we're on a path to compliance, I don't think anybody can sue us.
Kevin, if you're going to close the building for a few months to do any construction, it should all be done at once, meaning the AC, the heating system, because you're going to need to break out the floor and put in vents and do other things that will shut down the building again.
Be careful when you talk about AC. That could, that could be a big number.
No, no, we've, we're already scoping out a forced air system coming from the attic in the basement. It doesn't.
In fact, Kevin, isn't that one of our funding items?
Just to develop the plan, in case like Plappham Center, if, if the, if the, if the pipes in the wall blow, which they tend to begin to do, we're going to have a problem with the heating system. Which probably means maybe we just shut off some rooms and stuff.
I would be happy to serve on yet another Waveney.
No more, no more committees, Penny.
That's all right. I can handle it. See all the notebooks in my cabinet? I can handle them all. But I mean, from a, from a current city standpoint and, and interest in, in Waveney Park, I'd be happy to serve on the committee with up to really thoroughly investigate use of the building.
Just to clarify, Kevin, that, that engineering number that, that is in the five-year budget, is that, is that just to replace what we have now or does that include assessing AC?
That's, that, that's just to engineer a totally new forced air system, which would, which replace, abandon the current, what is it, hot water steam? I'm not sure which.
Steam.
Okay. And just abandon that in place and you have, you drill new holes to force air from the ceiling, from the attic and from the basement. And that's probably going to be a $2 million system. But you know, when you own a building that's worth $25 million and you already got 100 years of use out of it, to get another 100 years, you need to, need to spend some money. And I don't think most people, there's, there's $10 million housing in New Canaan. That people don't, you know, so I don't know why people are looking at this like, like you are.
Right, yes. It's 8:59. I'd like to say one thing and then move on to the next subject. I, I want to thank Leah. I want to thank Tiger. I want to thank Bill Ostman. And I want to thank Penny and Christina for all the work they did on the committee. I can tell now, and I could not tell before tonight's presentation, how much work you went into, went into this. Before tonight's presentation, we were told that, that elevator project went from a million dollars to $2.8 million and we were told, and some other stuff. And so now I think we have a decent appreciation that you took great sensitivity on making this the best possible building it could be for the residents of New Canaan and that it wouldn't look like it had been cobbled together with railings and mismatched floors. That has not been lost on us. Nevertheless, I am sensitive to Rich's concern, which is are we getting the best use we can out of it? I know it makes people happy, but Rich is right. Are we getting the most use out of it? And that's not something we're going to solve tonight. It's just a nagging question that some of us have. I think Christina articulated it well when she said, we, we said we want this and we want this and we want this, but we never knew how much it was going to cost. The only question we're debating tonight is not whether we're going to put money into Waveney, but whether we're going to put it into Waveney right now in the middle of a financial meltdown crisis with the world, you know, basically wondering whether this is a high priority for New Canaan in 2020. We're only arguing right now over a question of timing. That's what I want to leave you with. I think you did great work. I think this is a worthwhile project. This is not a criticism of Kevin's vision to basically get the jewel of New Canaan back into shape. This is only a question of timing. And I'll just finish by saying Tom Butterworth's suggestion that maybe by waiting till April 30th will give us better handle on the numbers. Maybe that's something we'll take up in the next week. Is that okay with everybody?
Thank you, Lee.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the library. Who is going to present next? Is it Keith Simpson? Is he first on the agenda? It doesn't really tell on the, I can't really tell.
I think the way the agenda is laid out. Am I on mute?
I, I'm on if you need me.
Okay. So a couple of days ago, Keith Simpson said on behalf of the preservationists and on behalf of the Friends of 1913 Library, he wanted to present a few slides. I said, do you have new information relevant to the budget decision? And he said, yes, I do. And I said, okay, present a few slides, no more than 10 minutes. And he said, got it. So with that, go ahead, Keith.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you to everyone. I think that Tom's tailors helping me to get up some slides on the screen. So can you see a picture of the library now?
We can.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Well, with that first slide, I would like to say the Friends of our 1913 Library. First, we congratulate the library itself on its very fine program and its programs and its great contribution to the town. We recognize that and appreciate that. And also to the, the trustees, past and present for their dedicated service to the library. We are completely in favor of a new building for the library. And what we're suggesting tonight will not be causing any delay to that process. We want that process to continue. We share in the library's community's general concerns and ambitions, but we do believe that a plan for a new library can include a saving of the 1913 portion of the old library. There will be no need for any redesign of the new building at all. This 1913 building has been a very highly valued part of the community for over 100 years. And it's always been very widely praised for its extremely high quality of its architectural style and detail. But we do know that early on, major time and money was spent in trying to save the 1913 part of the library building. And in the end, the decision to demolish it was really made very quietly and very privately. And basically, we, I don't think anybody outside the library community really knew that that decision had been made. So it's now come upon us as quite a surprise. So we suggest that if the library cannot manage its, on its own, to keep the 1913 and the community wants it saved, the Preservation Alliance and Friends of our 1913 Library, we stand ready to help, absolutely. We understand completely why a bigger, separate building in a better location is planned. And we reemphasize that we have no intention of interfering with or delaying any of the fundraising work being done for the new library. In fact, we believe that financial support for the new library, library is likely to be even greater and quicker if people know that the 1913 portion is in fact being saved. We are talking about only what will be happening on the best use of the town green portion of the property. And that's what we like to emphasize and talk about tonight. If I could have the next slide, please. Thank you very much. This is a site plan that I prepared some in 19, in 2012 at the library for a parking plan. As you can see, Main Street is at the top. Cherry Street, which is on the north, is on the right. A Main Street at the bottom. We're recommending removing both the south and the west additions to the current library, but saving and repurposing the 1913 portion and keeping it in place. We know that over the years, three adjacent parcels along South Avenue have been bought for the library with funds and help from the town. We do not recommend any attempt to move the 1913 structure from, to any other location. Apart from the extraordinarily heavy costs, we do not believe that it could survive such a move. We should, we bear in mind that it's also quite possible that ownership of the Gulf Station property next door may change and that over time, it may become incorporated into the library, into the library ownership itself. Next slide, please. The, this is an architect's rendering by Anderson Kenny showing that with the south and west wings removed from the present library, this is not a situation of being either one building or the other. There is plenty of room for both these buildings. In fact, they will be over 70 feet apart. Looking at the new library on the left, we are also excited for its future. We know, we know the Centerbrook Group well. I've worked with them personally, as have others. And we know that they are fine architects. We're confident that they will craft a very fine building for the town. We know the new building is still only in its design development phase, but realize that ultimate, the ultimate cost of this building is going to be very significant. We also know that the town green portion of the project will be very expensive indeed. However, believe that the town green is actually, excuse me, not a, an actually necessarily core library function. Next slide, please. This is the Centerbrooks' plan for the town green. Taking a really close look at it, we see that it really is not at all a strong and viable plan for really any town green. It's truly a town green in name only. It's been said that a big portion of the increased requested funds for the new library will be going towards this town green. The Cherry Street wall, walk, excuse me, the Cherry Street wall is shown as being moved back at least 10 feet. And it will probably cost around $150,000. That's the wall at the bottom, which you can see along Cherry Street. Three expensive planted areas, seating are planned along Cherry Street with an estimated cost of $100,000. We ask, will people really want to sit along Cherry Street looking at Route 124 and Route 106 traffic with the fumes of vehicles there? The very wide path from the corner of Cherry Street and Main Street with steps does not lead to a main entrance to the library. Its objective appears to be to wipe out 1913 building completely at the cost of at least 170, at least $75,000. Then there are three sitting height walls, 80 feet long, crisscrossing the middle of the green and rather dangerously dividing the green into four spaces for really what seems like no good reason. These could easily run $100,000 each. People walking onto the green from the south, being from the new library, would literally be likely to fall down when they encounter these walls, which are 16 inches high. These are actually really quite dangerous in our opinion. Up next to the new building, there's another 100-foot-long sitting wall, which blocks the flow from the new library out onto the green. There are also wide, expensive planting beds on either side of that wall, which will also block flow from the library to the green. It puzzles us that you would build a beautiful new library with a town green next to it, but essentially constrict the flow out onto it. The only real access out of the green is from the library is in its southwest corner, which is restricted down to a wall, which is really only about five feet wide. Again, access to the green is blocked from Cherry Street path, again, by wide planting. These planting beds are extremely expensive to build and certainly very expensive to maintain. So as designed, we feel that this town green is likely to be extremely expensive to maintain as well as to build and will really be rather dysfunctional. Next plan, please. We have, excuse me, we have an alternate plan in mind, which we show here, and we're suggesting that this plan for the town green is much simpler, very cost effective, and also with room for its own green space. It will be keeping a 1913 building with its face on Main Street, with its familiar walls, paths and steps from Main and Cherry Streets. It maintains the historic east approach to the building. Overgrown vegetation, which currently surrounds it, will, will, and conceals the architectural detail of the building will be removed. It can provide for a new west facade to 1913, which will face towards the Gulf Station with a terrace with contributing to its new green space. It also provides for new paths connecting the two buildings. Next. As this shows, this would keep the east and the north sides of the 1913 building in their original style. And meanwhile, oh, sorry, next plan. The next one says, this shows the photograph of the south elevation as it used to look before the additions were put on it. And this was only covered up. It has not been destroyed. It can be rediscovered. Our expert study shows that this building is in fact in remarkably good shape. Professional cost estimates show that this work can be done for under $1 million, which is much less than half of the library's own projections. And we can back up that data with good financial information from experts. Also, fundraising experts working with us are confident that the funds for this kind of work can also be raised. Next. As this slide shows, there's plenty of green space around these two buildings. The new library will have both its upper and lower garden terraces for outdoor activities. 1913 will have its west side both embracing and contributing to its green space. There will be new welcoming face to the renovated 1913 building with its own public terrace, offering stunning views of the new library. The west side of the 1913 building is at the same elevation as the new library, so both can have ADA handicap access. as the new library, so both can have ADA handicap access. There will be no wide, high maintenance planting beds blocking access from the house or for people, or walls for people to trip over. Meanwhile, the beautiful front of 1913 can remain, which is such a familiar sight to all. Last slide, please. So really what we're asking for finally is, first of all, time to develop the funding for repurposing just the 1913 portion of a library. Secondly, that you agree with this and vote for this one year hiatus for us to develop that plan and a plan for the library's future ownership, use and reconstruction that will not hold up anything and would help the new library in its funding, we believe. Thirdly, recognition that once the library, the 1913 library is gone, it's gone forever. We can build new lawns and greens anytime, but not a building like this again. This building was the pride and joy of the town when it was built. Please adopt Tom Butterworth's motion and help us save the 1913 portion of this library so we can work together to save this fine piece of downtown architecture. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Any of the council members want to ask questions or comment before we move on to Lisa Oldham?
Just have a quick question. Do we envision that if you left this building in place that you would still be able to have the Summer Theater of New Canaan and other things? Would you still have enough lawn space to do some of the things that the library's been able to do the last few years?
Oh, I, I think so, not all of the things necessarily. But they, when you take off that children's wing, which is a lot of land, thank you very much for that slide. There's a good amount of green space at the back of the building there. And we do hope that negotiations, negotiations are successful in the end for the acquisition of the Gulf Station. We know the first selectmen, we know the library trustees have all been working toward that end. If that would have occurred, then the area of green space at the back of these buildings, or I won't say the back, but anyway, but in that area would, you know, almost triple.
That would have to be another capital appropriation or something else in order for the town to help buy the Gulf Station. Is that correct?
Well, I know they've been working on it for many years. So, you know, when, when that might happen, I, you know, I'm not the one to predict.
Wasn't it just so?
No, it apparently was not.
Just a quick question, and thanks for the presentation. How much will it cost to maintain this building if it's, if it's kept as is?
You mean the 1913 building?
Correct, correct. What would be the operating expense for a building like this?
Um, actually, I'm probably not the best one to be able to answer that question for you. But our, our evaluation of it is that it is very solidly built. We do know that the newer portions of the library have been experiencing flooding. The south wing particularly on Main Street and leakage in the children's wing. But from what we understand, this building is extremely solid on high dry ground. And there's no reason for it to be subject at all to the flooding and really nor the leaking if it has reasonable maintenance. It's lasted over 100 years. I'm afraid I can't give you an exact number, though.
Keith, how many square feet will the building be?
I think it's 3,500.
Yeah, Mark, you, you open the door to a series of questions, you know, what? How do we pay? What's the design? What's the use? And one of the, the main purpose of putting a delay on this is to, is to have time to answer those questions. We haven't had very much time to think about those things. But just my personal view is that before we actually press ahead and, and renovate the building and take it over as a town, we would have to have a fairly high level of confidence that it would be financially self sustaining either, either from, either from donations or rental income or if we had town offices in there or, or school offices, that it would be, the cost would be offset by saving rents from other locations. But we haven't nailed that down yet. But one of the possibilities, using the schools as an example, is that, you know, maybe we could house the alternative high school and the, and the, and the launch program in there, which currently are activities that are, that are paying rent and utilities at another location. And so we, you know, we'd have to price those things out and find out what the, you know, whether it may make sense from the overall cost. But, but I, I for one, do not envision having this be anything other than self sustaining financially. Or we won't have to do it.
Right, okay, thanks, Tom.
Anything further? Otherwise, we'll move on to the other presentation.
I just have a question about ADA compliance. Where would the entrance be for ADA?
I'm sorry, what would which?
Where would the entrance be for the ADA compliance?
Um, if I could go back to the, almost the last but one slide, it's, yeah, that one would be good. The one below that. Thank you. That, that west side of the building shows a small terrace there. And that, yes, thank you. And that's exactly where it could be ADA compliant. The, the new library elevation and that terrace are at the same elevation. They're within six inches of each other. So anybody coming to either building could be handicap accessible right into the back of the building there. The front would not be, it's just not possible to get into the front of the building down on, I mean, it's possible, but I mean, it would be ramps and ugly and there's no, no need to do that. We can access the building for handicap ADA from its west side. Thanks for the question, Robin.
John, I see on the chat that Ellen Cravato's asked someone from the library to respond to this.
I couldn't hear that. Could you say it again?
Yes, I see on the chat box here that Ellen Cravato was asked to have someone from the library respond to this.
They, they have the next 10 minutes to make their presentation anyway. And yeah, they can respond to, you know, whatever they've heard.
Fair enough.
Okay, so if, nothing further?
John, can I just ask one question? How many parking spots are there in any case, no matter which plan? Are there outside parking spots that lead to that 1913 building and the library? That's probably for...
The new library is going to address its own parking issues. I think the, this building will hopefully be, by virtue of its historic nature and position, be able to satisfy its parking requirements with Morse Court and the Center School parking lot right next door. So hopefully wouldn't be held to the standard of a brand new, modern building for complying with every parking requirement. That, we hope the planning is only my view of it in light. Thank you for the question, though.
I guess my questions before we break are purely financial. Whether you've raised, whether you have any funding circled at this time? Or do you need the year to explore funding?
Well, I think we have, we have a lot of interest from people who care about this kind of preservation of really valuable buildings. But I don't know the details of what any of the accounts look like at this point. But I'm, I'm reassured by people who do know the way around that, that they see this as a very strong candidate for those kind of funds.
Keith, can I ask a mechanical question? If, if this option is executed, would this be owned by the town? Or is this owned by a nonprofit like the Preservationists or something else? What's the plan here?
I think, oh, God.
Maybe I could address that. Anything's possible, but, but we, the project started out with the, with the recognition that the library wanted to have nothing to do with it. And so they didn't want to have anything to do with the renovation costs, with the, the preservation, the ongoing maintenance or the use. So, so it, you know, it's not our bias that suggests that it couldn't be owned by the library, but it sounds like it's not something they would, would have any interest in knowing, owning, which led us to the possibility of the town owning it. We certainly haven't contemplated Preservation Alliance owning it. But there could be other options, I suppose, if there were a foundation or whatever that were set up, if folks wanted it to be independent of the town, that, that's also a possibility. But I would imagine that it would be something the town might want to control because of the, because of the strategic location.
Another building?
Well, that's part of the reason why we really did want some breathing space in a few months, in fact, even as much of a year, to be able to discuss these with people who would be stakeholders in it and come up with these kind of answers for you. It was just the, we only saw the plans for the library really in middle of January. And so we've been on a rather fast curve of learning about what these plans are since then. So we do hope that you will support Tom's approach of giving some space over a year for us to be able to work out some of these issues for this really extraordinarily beautiful building, in our opinion.
I would agree with Penny that we don't want another building without a purpose. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't envision moving ahead with this unless it had a compelling purpose. And it's somewhat more remarkable as an architectural gem than some of the buildings on the, on the long list would be.
Okay, we can continue the town council discussion after the next presentation. And we can discuss, I guess, the two presentations together. Are you ready?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Keith. Okay, are you ready, Lisa Oldham? Are you ready, Ellen Cravato?
No, Ellen is not on this meeting, is not.
There you are.
It's just me, just me. And so, John, tonight I'm doing a presentation on our operating budget.
Okay.
A presentation to answer the several pages of questions that I received from the town council on both the operating budget and the capital budget. And then finally, I will give up some comments on what you just saw. How's that?
Okay.
So I'm not sure, okay, there we go with the screen. So I'm gonna, I'm going.
Okay, you're frozen, but channel, oh, there you are.
Did we lose the connection?
I think we've lost Lisa. She's frozen on my screen.
Right. Is somebody able to text Lisa and let her know that, what's going on on our end?
Yes, we, we have.
Oh, great, thank you.
Can I offer some comic relief?
Yes, please.
This is for all. It's, it's fun to follow up Tom Butterworth's last comments, and I'm admiring his timber frame ceiling. I'm sitting in the Lyndle Fitch Robinson house. You're lucky if you're the Robinson, because you get to append your name to a house that is the second oldest house in New Canaan. This house was built for the grandson of the governor of the Norwalk Colony. So a loyalist house, if you will. What's fun is I'm sitting in a room where local, both family and non-family disputes were adjudicated, as well as births and deaths were recorded by one Reverend Drummond, an educated man who came down from an academy later to be known as Yale University. So it's, it's all fun. But it's equally fun to talk about a young building, the 1913 building, which I'd love to just point out to everyone, was the first special purpose library building that was agreed by all townspeople, having moved from some retail or commercial space downtown on Elm Street to its own special purpose built building. And so I deem that special, and I'm very honored to speak to you tonight from this particular room. And I would so like to thank Keith Simpson and all the folks who put efforts into, Anderson Kenny and others, who put efforts into educating us as to how important that 1913 building is. Last thing said, we have a rare opportunity right now, whether we're scared or we're not scared about the economy, whether we're scared or not scared about our health. We have a rare opportunity to have a triple win for this town. It's not hard. Let's put aside some of the contention and let's go for that triple win. And thank you so much.
Well, I bet none of the four, none of your forebears ever held a town meeting, ever participated in a town meeting in that house. So that'll be a first. I might, I just want to say something.
Thank you, Tom.
Might want to say something really quick about to, maybe to preview the conversation we're going to have later. You know, I listened, I've read, oh my gosh, the wonderful letters from both sides. We don't have Lisa yet, right? And I'm very impressed with the arguments on both sides. And I, and I keep asking, and I know others have been asked the same question. Is, is there any way we can come together? Why are we not somehow meeting in the middle or finding a way to do both? And, and the only thing insight that I had is that, is that there seems to be a sense, when you're in the new library building, that somehow this is going to muddy up the view, that it's going to be something unappealing to look at. And, and obviously, from, from the perspective of many of us, we think it's absolutely gorgeous. But there's a fundamental misunderstanding. It's been called an eyesore on one side and gorgeous from the other. So I'm not, I'm not here to try to bridge that gap, but I think it's the subtext in a lot of what's being said about, you know, in, in this controversy. It's just, it's very subjective, but, but I thought it was worth throwing out there.
Tom, if I can respond, it's Eileen Thomas. I actually haven't heard any of that, but I have heard concerns about the fact that the library green and the green space outside the library is actually an extension of the programming of the library, or that's how it's been planned and built. Those gardens are things that would be planted with children and programming would take place inside of, like the pollinator pathways that are part of the joint efforts that we do with the other nonprofits in town. And that there, the theater and the Shakespeare in the Park and the other types of outdoor spaces that are a continuation of the programming that has been planned within the library and outside of the library is part of that green. So that building being put on the library green in the middle of that space would greatly curtail those services and activities. And that, that has not been given a lot of consideration. But I have not heard very much, at least from within the library, planning about the concern that it's an eyesore. I think for many, many years, boards of trustees and other people have tried to figure out how to save it, yet also meet the needs that the community surveys have laid out in terms of what the community is looking for in terms of library services.
Okay, I see Lisa is back.
I'm back, I'm back.
Right.
So I'll get started on the presentation for the operating budget. And can you please confirm, John, that you actually have the budget documents for the library, which is a spreadsheet, which has about 10 income lines and about 30, 20-some expense lines?
Are you sharing your screen?
No, no, you should have that in your budget document.
We do.
Your budget binder.
We'll pull that up.
I'm just trying, here we go. And now I've got a presentation for you. Can you see that now?
Yes.
Okay. So I know a lot of the town council actually attended the Board of Finance meeting last week, so I'll go quickly through the slides that you may have already seen. A short history of the library, we've been in partnership with the town since 1895. And over the last seven years, the town has provided about 75% of our operating costs, including all of our health insurances. This is a graph showing the sources and uses of funding for the year ahead, based on the budget that I've submitted. As you can see, the salaries and wages and IT costs are pretty much equal to the town funding. So now I'm going to move into some new slides. These are in response to the questions that I received last week from the town council. This first one, and I'm just, how do I move you people out of the way so I can see it? So, yes, so there were a series of questions that I've put all on one slide, asking me to compare our library to our peer towns. So the first thing is we are all association libraries. That means private-public partnership libraries. But what is interesting is that there is no uniformity. So while all municipal libraries operate in pretty much the same way, all association libraries operate in a range of different ways. So one of the questions you asked was about town representation on library boards. As you can see, Darien and Greenwich both have, as we do, the first selectman as ex officio on the library board. In Westport, 50% of their new trustees are elected by the board, and another 50% are elected through the RTM process. Ridgefield's board elects 25% of its trustees, and 75% are nominated by the library and then appointed by the first selectman. You didn't ask, but I thought you might like to know the status of the union membership of the other libraries. Both Westport and Greenwich are union libraries. You asked about endowment. So not as easily found as some of the other information, but we did quite a lot of digging to see what we could find. We called various people, it was obviously in the time of COVID, so not everybody got back to us. However, Darien, we could see, based on the amount of income that they report into their operating from investments, we assume around $6 million of either investments or endowment. Similarly, Westport, based on what they are drawing off and putting into their operating, we're assuming four to five million is implied by their income. Greenwich does not have an endowment. It has a separate foundation. That separate foundation is only used, it's restricted for use by the Peterson Wing, so one portion of their library, and depending on how recently it's been used and the state of investment, it's up to $38 million. And then Ridgefield as well, has about $5 million invested, and they use the interest from that to supplement their operating income. So this next one related to capital contributions to the library that are not connected to a capital campaign. As you can see, here in New Canaan, we have not had any that we know about. Darien does not get capital monies from the town of Darien. All of its CapEx are supported by a separate 501(c)(3) entity, which also supports its book buying and programs. On the other hand, all of the maintenance of its plant is funded by the town. Westport Library, substantially all of its CapEx through an informal agreement, is provided by the town. We don't know the story in Wilton. In Ridgefield, it's 100% as in Greenwich, except for the Peterson Wing, which is supported by its separate foundation. So as you can see, the story is unique to each library. The next set of questions you were asking was about comparing the annual grants of the different municipalities to the different libraries. As you can see here, for last year, for which we all have audited data, on a per capita basis, the only way that we can really get apples to apples, you can see us over $131, and you can see the others, and you can see that we are above Ridgefield. And by the way, yes, this includes all the health insurance in this number. You wanted to see the municipal grants to libraries over the last three years, and so I've got a few different ways to show this, to give you an idea of how we compare to our peer towns. The bars furthest to the left are 19, and then to the right are 17. Those are actual dollars. I don't find that that is as useful, given that it's not as clear a comparison as that per capita number that I typically give you here. And again, here are those total dollar amounts that each town provides to its library annually. And by the way, once again, that does include all health insurances. By contrast, this is what fundraising has looked like for the last three years, when we compare ourselves to all of the other communities. These are dollars, not dollars per capita. So you can see that for most years, we have been ahead of all of our peers. Obviously, Greenwich had a really good year in 2017. We don't know anything about that, what particularly happened that year. You can see here, as you'll see in a later slide, that we consistently out-fundraised most of our peers, and certainly per capita. And here you can see the actual dollars raised. This is showing the municipal appropriation as the percentage of the total operating budget. Again, you can see clearly that back in, these were the three years you asked for. Starting in 2017, we were at 77%. In 2018, we were at 73%. And this past year, 75%. And once again, all of this data does include the health insurance costs, which in our case are not in our budget, but are in the town's budget, as you know. This is a different way of looking at the comparison of funding of libraries amongst all the different libraries. This shows us the percentage of the municipality's funds, which the municipality provides to its library service. And then the total operating revenue per capita, and bear in mind, this is all sources, both fundraising, as well as the town, as well as the money that we get from the state or any other grants that we might get. So this was a slide that I'd had in originally, this is not one of the new slides, but you will remember that four years ago, I came before all of the bodies and pointed out, as you can see on the left-hand side of this chart, that compared to our peer libraries, we were not in a position to pay our staff at competitive rates. And at the time, I was losing staff, and I was having difficulty both retaining and recruiting staff. And I brought to you a proposal that would see us bring our wages up to be more competitive with our peers. And you can see, over the three years that this represents, that we did, in fact, get our salaries and wages up to a level that is much closer to the median. We're still lower than four out of the five of our peers, but we're a heck of a lot closer to the median. And as you may recall, this was meant to be a four-year plan, and we would be going into the fourth year. You didn't ask for this, but I thought you'd be interested to see that we are very much on par with our peer libraries in terms of staffing compared to the population. As well as what we spend on staffing as a percentage of all of our operating costs. We continue to do very well comparatively in all of our service metrics. Our program attendance is very high. Our borrowing is about the third highest in all of Connecticut. And we fundraise at the very highest levels. We raise the second-most number of actual dollars, and the second-most dollars per capita of any town in Connecticut. And to conclude this portion of the presentation, which is about our operating budget, we continue to be very well managed. We have a very high rate of community participation, even in this time that our doors have been closed. We continue to see very high rates of borrowing, high visitor numbers, exceptional philanthropic giving from our community, and very high quantity and quality of volunteer participation. So did you have any questions, or do you want to go through the actual budget?
I have a good understanding of your budget, and I don't think that there was a great deal of concern about your budget. I can't speak for all 12, so if any town council member really needs to see a budget presentation, let him or her speak now.
John, can we have the presentation that Lisa just made put in our tablets? I don't see it.
Yes, you'll have it by tomorrow morning, or later tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. There was one there, Christina, but I needed to alter it significantly, obviously, to answer all your questions, so I just updated it, and you haven't got the update. So no more questions about the budget itself?
Lisa, this is Rich. Let me just tell the town council, also on your tablets are the audits for the last three years and the latest tax return for the nonprofit, showing all the history of the numbers.
And I'm not sure how often your tablets are updated, but you should have the last seven years of audits as well. We send them through every year. Okay, so are you ready to move on to the next portion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So these next slides are all in response to your queries about the capital, the proposal for the $10 million for the library from the town. The first thing you requested was a general timeline. Probably doesn't make sense for me to just read this out, you've all got it on your screens, but it shows you that once we get started, and we would start, once we have clarity about the town's position, we will get moving forward on signing contracts with architects right after we sign the memorandum of understanding with the town. And then design development starts. We hope to submit our planning and zoning application over summer. And we'll get into hiring a construction manager and bidding by winter '21. This keeps us on track to hopefully be moving into the library, the new building, in about fall of '22, and a grand opening once the site work is done and the green is developed in spring of '23.
And this is all still the timeline, given the coronavirus?
So you may notice that this is pushed back from what we were talking about a few months ago, by a couple of months. It's pushed back more until we're certain what town's position is on all of this, more than coronavirus. Once we have that clarity, we can start the serious design work for this project. And we'll go straight back to fundraising, and we are in preparing for a public phase of the capital campaign, which will be pushed back because of coronavirus. Depending on when quarantines are lifted and that sort of thing, we would be looking at later this summer instead of end of spring for the start of the public phase. But everything else, all this work that you're looking at, this will start as soon as we have clarity on the town's position. So there were quite a number of questions wanting to understand our fundraising so far, and our projections for funds incoming over the next several years. So on the left hand, you can see that of the fundraising we've done, we've already got over $8 million in our bank. We have another $8.3 million in pledges connected to those other funds, pledges still remaining to come in over the next couple of years. We've got there the $10 million request from town. And then we've already had some expenditures, as you can see. Since we started this capital campaign, we have also spent about $875,000. And before we started this capital campaign, we had already spent about $5 million getting to this point. So someone else mentioned in there...
It's outrageous.
Excuse me? So we had spent about $5 million before that, buying the properties adjacent to us, various other, work with other architects, and various other things, getting us up to the stage that we started a capital campaign. We also have a $15 million line of credit that has been established to manage cash flows during this time. And you can see that graphically over on the right. So there was a question about building design and project management resources and its structure. The building design project will be led by Centerbrook Architects and their consultants. The project management will be our owner's rep and the construction manager and preconstruction services and Centerbrook, and then the construction phase, led by the construction manager with the owner's rep and Centerbrook. There were some questions about our expectations once we get to the new library and operating the new library. So there's some important things to understand before I get to those numbers. Most libraries that have had any sort of renovation, or have been built new, or have just, whatever, most libraries have shifted to RFID technology and robotic materials handling over the last 15 to 20 years. We will do this when we move to a new library. These technologies will allow us to redeploy the majority... These technologies will allow us to redeploy the majority of one of our teams to frontline customer service departments. Looking at the staffing numbers of our peer libraries in buildings about the size or slightly larger than the one that we are going to build, for example, Darien, the, the full-time equivalent per square foot numbers will work out with the staff that we currently have. We are not planning to increase headcount to move into this library. We do not think it is necessary. Another area that I think there was some concern about would be heating, cooling and electricity. Obviously, we haven't got to the stage in our design development to be able to do serious modeling for this. However, given the state of our current building, the new building will obviously be much, much more efficient as a LEED certified modern building. The new building is only 26,000, 26% or 10,000 square feet larger than the current library. And based on the data from several other public buildings of similar size built in the last 10 years, our costs, it shouldn't say should, it should be shouldn't, sorry, shouldn't increase significantly. Although until we are in a position to make decisions on the methods of heating and cooling, we can't do the modeling. We will also have new income in the new library. We'll get rentals through the various spaces, we'll have room bookings, which will be much more attractive to for-profits and we will have the cafe lease income. So looking at a pro forma, and I do have the full spreadsheet, but I didn't think you could read it. It was several pages long, so I thought I would do a precis here for this, but I can share the, the full budget projections. I'm looking at two and a half percent increase each year from town. And you'll also see there, it's about a two and a half percent increase with our own fundraising year on year over these years. We also start to get the benefit of that income and looking at some modeling that we have been able to do comparing similar spaces that we will have, as well as what leases look like for cafe space. We should see something like $40,000 a year in new income coming in once we move into the new building. Staffing increases, I've calculated at two and a half percent based on the past several years and where we hope to be with being able to continue to remunerate our staff in a competitive way. IT is currently going up about 5% a year. Staff and IT combined are equivalent to currently the town grant. We've spoken to our grounds people and they had them look at our, the initial drawings and, and just to be clear, everyone, the landscape drawings that we have, I know you, we all just saw one, but that one was discounted quite early. We have several drawings that were done by Steven Stimson, landscape architect out of Boston. And so I showed one of the more likely ones to our grounds people and it's probably initially upfront about $10,000 increase on what we currently pay for all of our landscaping. And then that will go forward. And then again HVAC and electricity, really it'll be depending on whether we do geothermal, which would, which would probably go under the green. Or we go with something like Trigen or CoGen, whether or not we have solar on day one and if so, or if not, when we get solar and how much. So we could see up to $10,000 increase in the first year on heating, cooling costs, maybe. I don't think it's going to be that high, but again, until we can do the modeling, we won't know. I was wanting to be very cautious here. The question was asked, why 10 million? Well, it's an accelerator. I mean, I think an awful lot of people seem to be saying how important it is that we get this done as soon as we possibly can. Time is money, the longer it takes to do this, the more it's costing. We know that when we sign up for the next stage of design development in the next month or so, one of the first things that we will do are new, new estimates. And then it'll be our job to figure out how to, to make sure that we're back down in the cost range that we need to be. But the sooner we get going, the less it's going to cost. Another rationale for the 10 million is this is what we heard from the community. Every time we shared this project over the last 18 months, we heard, you know, is the town in, how much is the town in for? And, you know, we obviously weren't in a position to say for sure. And we knew at the time that there was $5 million in the long-term capital plan. And the reaction was consistently, town should be a meaningful contributor at $10 million. We actually heard more than that as well, but we heard often $10 million. And then of course, the common refrain, town will get a wonderful new library at a 70% discount. So before I move on, did you have any questions on that portion, John?
No.
Or anyone else, anybody on the town council? So that answered all of your questions?
That top PNC line, that was, that was the town's contribution growing?
Correct, at two and a half percent.
I have a question, this is Maria. With what's going on in the economy right now, do you have to, or is there a way to reconfirm pledges? Since they're only pledges, right?
So you saw in that, in that graph that I just showed, actually we've already got in over eight and a half million of those. So pledges means they come in over years, but we've actually got half of that 16 million is already in the bank. So yes, of course, we, we would, we would, we will be talking to our donors, but we haven't had anyone suggesting that they're not still in. Quite the contrary, we feel and we seem to be hearing from people that they think that this project is more important than ever because once we are out of this period, that this sort of economic stimulus is going to be really important to getting, re-energizing and revitalizing town.
If I could answer, it's Ellen Cravato, I'm the development director at the library, hi.
Hi.
I just would like to let you know that we have been in touch with our donors and we in fact had two six-figure commitments in the last two weeks. So I think that we're feeling that people really see the, the benefits to the project that go well beyond what's happening in the short term.
I think a lot of people are saying they're nervous about what's going on personally. I mean, I know, gosh, my daughter took a, a work cut. They're talking about it at my husband's company, you know, pay salary cuts. So yeah, if the donors are committed, that's great, but I think people are worried about the ability to pay going forward. But that also kind of leads to the second point, we talked about it with Waveney and getting construction estimates, maybe people will be more competitive in pricing. I know it's, you know, we're just.
If we can get moving here, I think we could take advantage of that sort of thing. I think that's absolutely right.
Okay.
I would just add to the, to the first point that Maria made. You know, in 2007, we paid $20 million for Irwin Park and, you know, we went through a financial crisis and that was $20 million plus interest expense and maintenance costs. And we're in pretty good firm, we're on, we're still here. So I, I, I don't buy the argument that, you know, we should be scared away from doing that because of the current environment. We have history, which tells us a lot in this case.
I think what I'm hearing, Mark, is that a lot of people are very clear that they view this as a project that brings economic stimulus to the downtown, perhaps more urgent than ever in this climate. And that they actually see it as a very hopeful gesture that we would be able to proceed at this time.
Yes, and I've made it, I, I've stated to my, my colleagues that I, I can't think of a better situation where you're getting $2 for everyone that the town has to spend. So that obviously wasn't the case in Irwin Park and fortunately I wasn't sitting on a, on a county council at that time.
Anyone else? Okay, if there's no further questions or observations from the council, then I guess we will entertain motions.
No, I have more.
Okay, oh, okay, keep going.
So yes, so since, since we have the proposal about saving the 1913, I obviously also have prepared to discuss that since you're planning to talk about it later. So it has been stated that a one-year delay doesn't cause us any problems. Well, this is simply not the case. If we are to wait a year from now before we know what our project looks like, we cannot start our public phase fundraising. We can't really continue to do other fundraising, the, the major fundraising. Until, unless we have a very clear project, we're not in a position to go out and ask for investment. I think it's important to maybe go back and recall the process by which we got here. Because we are a private-public partnership, when we started down this road over 15 years ago, it was clear that it was the library's job to build a new library. And about six or seven years ago, in conversations, it was clear that we were getting closer. And the previous first selectman put a $5 million placeholder in the five-year capital plan, knowing that at some point, sooner rather than later, we were going to be in a position to start moving this seriously forward and that the town would want to be a partner in this civic asset. And so it was very clear to us from town council, from, from the town of New Canaan, that we had to do the work of getting this ready, raising a significant amount of money before we could come and speak to town and ask for town to be a partner in this project. Last summer, we started talking with various people at town council about setting up a meeting so that we could share the project. And the message was very clear, when you've reached the halfway mark, we'll set up a meeting. And so that's what we did. And that's why we came to you in January. So the suggestion that this was in any way done in a, in a swift or sneaky way is absolutely absurd. We hewed to the line of the process that town gave to us and we've done everything that was been asked of us. A one-year delay means we have to stop with our design. Because the idea of having a building in the front lawn is not a good decision. It's not a good decision. If that were the, the, the choice, we would have to go back to the drawing board. It would be very important to go back to the beginning. Keeping the 1913 building would require redesign of the new library in order to create an intentional and appropriate relationship between the two buildings. A relationship in which both old and new were in sync, possibly more oriented towards Maple and Main, integrated into a single site planning strategy. The geothermal system designed for the new building would be, have to be reevaluated. I have a letter here from our architect. It's quite long, I will send it to you later, but I will read to you just some excerpts. This was written to me from Jim Childress. Renovating all or part of the existing library was the initial goal of the committee. Through the analysis, we came to realize that this approach would be expensive. The initial plan was almost 70,000 square feet. The challenge was then to how to connect the new library in useful and affordable way. We then got further budget and scope refinement. And with new input on private funding capacities, it was determined the library size and cost would need to be reduced. Reducing the size allowed for the building of the library and event space on the current parking lot, all in one phase of construction, thus saving costs. This approach did result in disconnecting the 1913 wing. We explored alternative ways to use the wing as a standalone building that wouldn't require staffing. Other, our cost estimators determined it would cost about three and a half million in project costs to renovate the wing to modern standards. That initial cost, long-term maintenance, et cetera, made it impossible for the library board to justify the added financial burden. Unfortunately, every alternative we have explored has led to the conclusion that keeping the 1913 structure in its current location does not contribute to the library's operating or financial stability. So that's from Jim, I'll send you the full, the full part of the, the full letter tomorrow. But I also thought you would like to see the drawing of what it would look like. So you've been shown another drawing tonight. But that one didn't really have the scale of, or, or the, the grading of the actual property. This one's been done by Centerbrook using all of the, the detailed CAD drawings that they have of the whole site. They have all of this in their software and were able to retain the existing building exactly where it is and incorporate it into the plans for the new. So this is in fact what it would look like. The idea that you could put summer theater behind there is quite clearly not viable. Especially because what you're looking at here is only 1913. Whereas the drawing you were shown earlier had 1913 plus what is currently the gallery and something else added to it to make sure that it would be symmetrical. Another thing that I thought you should probably see is this estimate. So I've had two sets of estimates. Previous presentation suggested that it wouldn't cost nearly this much, but they didn't show you any estimates. We have estimates here.
Are you sharing a screen with us? Cause we're not seeing.
Are you not seeing it? Okay.
We're not seeing graphics.
We didn't see the library picture either.
Oh, you couldn't. Can you see that?
Yes.
So that's what, that's what I was, sorry, I thought you were seeing that when I was talking about. This is, this is the exact image.
That's what I was imagining, but no.
That you would have, right? So, so what we just saw earlier didn't really look like this with the overhead view. And it looked like the, the grade of the property was, was quite a lot different. But this is in fact what it would look like. This is where it sits right now and showing the other building behind it. And as you can see behind there, there is certainly no room for something like summer theater. There's certainly no room for concerts or any of the other community programming that we have planned for the town green. So can you see this?
Yes.
Right, so what this is, is a professional estimate by Durham Consulting out of Boston on what it would cost. These are two different estimates. This top one would be to relocate the 1913 building to a new site and rebuild it. You can see there well over $3 million for all of that. But let's move down to the next estimate, which is for retaining the 1913 building in situ and rebuilding it appropriately. So you can see the top line, which I think is obviously the most important bit, the $3 million. But these are for, for ordinary, normal things to be done. Foundations, new roof, interior fit out. So we do actually have these, these numbers. So in response to the previous presentation, the delay means a delay. A hiatus of a year means the delay of a year. And if it were decided at the end of that year to keep that building, then it's another further year because we would absolutely have to go back and redesign the entire thing. Now, we know what that would cost because we've spent that kind of money already. Who would be the person paying for those designs? I'm not clear. And who would be the people that would come up with the $2.5 to $3 million to rebuild it? I know the suggestion is for town to buy that and for town to operate it. And I think, you know, that's a decision you all need to make. There's been a suggestion that the town green is not important to the library's project, but it was conceived as an integrated project with the town green as part of our total service operation. I know nothing about the Gulf Station being acquired. I, I don't have any idea whether that is going to happen at any time. There was a suggestion that the 1913 building hasn't flooded and it has three times in the last two years. Yes, of course, it could be made watertight again, I'm sure. The idea that it could be self-sustaining, given that it's 1,300 square feet, seems challenging to imagine. But again, I guess there could be some creative people that might be able to figure that out. I've been told that you would absolutely have to incorporate parking for such a structure if you did find a new use for it. I think that was most of the things. Oh, there was also a suggestion that the the properties around, the adjacent properties were contributed by town. And yes, that is true. Town, in its interest to get this project moving, offered us help with buying the final property. But in total, that's been 13% of the total costs of the land acquired all around us. As I said, the library spent over $5 million getting up to this first state of getting these projects, this project done. So I think that's the end.
Any comments from the council? Any questions from the council?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Lisa, just in theory, you know, we go ahead with the town green. In the future, with the library, if circumstances changed, could the library in theory ever sell that property? Who does that town green really belong to?
Well, the town green belongs to the library. But, but, but I would imagine that the Planning and Zoning Commission in New Canaan would have the authority to decide if it could be parceled off. I can't imagine a future wherein the library would ever want to have it be anything other than a lovely green. But surely the town, the town's own planning and zoning would have authority over that being able to be redeveloped in any way. Also Liz, I realize I didn't mention, but the the earlier discussion of the town green, there were about many different drawings done of potential town greens. The one that was shown earlier with the terraces is one that's been discounted. The terracing obviously wouldn't be as useful. That was done very early in the process. That wouldn't be nearly as useful for the sorts of things that we imagine.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go back to a function within the library? Or are we only on the 1913 building now?
Go ahead.
I was going through some notes, which is why I didn't ask it earlier. And I didn't know whether or not Ronat Tegel was still on and would kind of ask the same question that, because we were having a discussion about the use of Wave Any House and the possibility that more community organizations would use Wave Any House. How dependent is the library on these outside organizations utilizing the library as rental space for their revenue? If we, as a town and the rec department, you know, proactively went out and marketed the building to the community?
How dependent are we on rental income from nonprofits using meeting rooms? Not very. So the $40,000 that I mentioned in new rental incomes, the largest portion of that would be lease income for the cafe. So that'd be leased, right, out to somebody? Then we have the 300-person auditorium that can be rented out as function space with the kitchen at the back. That's the other larger part. While I do think that we will get more nonprofits using the meeting room space, it's not a major, significant part of our, our income in the scheme of things.
Okay, thank you. I think in relation to that question is the number of tutors who use the library space, or we heard in some of the comments, individuals who essentially conduct their business in the library space. Are they renting space to undertake their businesses?
So let me address first the tutors. I believe that we are providing a service to parents and families by allowing their children to be tutored in a public, open space that is safe and secure. The children are not meeting tutors at some other location like the tutor's home or having the tutor come into their home when mom and dad might be at work. That said, are the tutors challenging for us? Yes, they are at the moment because of course, we don't have all the space we need for them. We would absolutely are looking at having very clear and restricted spaces for the tutors. But if we're suggesting that we shouldn't support the families who are the very donors to this project through their taxes and through their donations, that that space can't be used by their children to be tutored, I think that's not going to go down all that well.
Can we separate out just the people who are donors and allow their children to be tutored and charge the tutors a reasonable fee?
Wow. I think that would be extraordinarily difficult to manage. I'd probably need to employ another full-time person to manage such a scheme. I, I, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I can't imagine how that would work.
Anyone else?
I have a question on the town green. Could a deed restriction be put on it rather than, you know, just relying on P and Z to make sure that it was never built on in the future?
I don't think it's necessary. To subdivide would require planning and zoning approval, I believe, right? So that would rest with the town. It would, it wouldn't seem to be in any way necessary to do. I mean, I don't know, 75 years from today, I can't imagine that a library board is going to want to do that. But I would think that you would rely on the, the planning and zoning process, a robust planning and zoning process that reflected what town thought was appropriate over those years. It just seems like overkill to me. You've got, you've got planning and zoning, so why not leave it with them? The library hasn't, you know, I can't imagine any library in the future ever wanting to not have that beautiful green in front of it.
John, it's Christina. I have a question. Lisa, as you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission developed the Plan of Conservation and Development and identified the 1913 building as one of the town's landmarks in historic buildings. One of importance to preserve both its history and the presentation that it signifies to the town. So it means that the town is looking to preserve it. As the drawings and proposals were developed, was there much consideration given over what the town commitment and focus was on preserving its history?
Are you asking whether or not we considered it to be important to try to find a way to preserve 1913?
Both, because whether or not you try to find a way, you still can get over the impetus that the town in its planning, in its plan of conservation and development, look to preserve it. So was it?
That, that's not, the plan of, the plan of conservation and development does not mention the library. But in answer to your other question, yes, we certainly did. There were, as I just read out to you excerpts from Jim's letter, there were, the goal initially was to incorporate the 1913 building. But various attempts were made to try to do that. And in the end, the decision was taken not to do that.
I guess our opinions differ. I went to the Plan of Conservation and Development and it has a picture of the 1913 building in it, along with the other buildings that is identified as one to preserve.
Is that it?
Yeah.
So Tom, did you want to make a motion?
Unmute. Yes, I would. So for Town Council's consideration, I would read as follows. "The Town Council shall not approve a contribution to the cost of building a new library until the town has been granted a one-year option to purchase for $1 the parcel of land on which the original 1913 library building is situated, including frontage on Main and Cherry Streets and bordering on the property on which the Gulf Station is currently situated."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So now we discuss the motion. So is there any discussion of the motion?
Could you read it again, just one more time?
He provided it by email to us earlier today.
Okay, I'll look, I'll look it up.
But go ahead. You can read it again.
No, I'm not sure I copied everybody in. "The Town Council should not approve a contribution to the cost of building a new library until the town has been granted a one-year option to purchase for $1 the parcel of land on which the original 1913 library building is situated, including frontage on Main and Cherry Streets and bordering on the property on which the Gulf Station is currently situated."
Ms. Penny, I think we had just heard that the library, according to the executive director, probably would not be of a mind to sell the property for $1.
No, I think we all understand that there, I think we all understand that there will be opposition. The question is, what is being proposed is that they would have to, they would have to give us an option in order to get the $10 million. That's what this would do.
We're, we're having the effect of paying, doing that would give us the effect of paying $10 million for a one-year option. And, and according to Lisa, that would delay them two years.
But Rich, with all due respect, the Plan of Conservation and Development, pages 13 through 15, not only identify the library, but also gives guidance as to what the town is looking for to preserve. So I think that the library has an issue with the town through the approval process on the same issue.
I think that would, I think it was pretty aggressive on the town's part to take a building that they didn't own and say it was something they had something to say about.
Well, being that we support the, the building and its operation to a tune of about 2.3 million and annually increasing, I think we do have a say.
But it's, when Lisa did such a great job in that presentation, we're no different than any other town supporting a library. So I don't think we can use the operating, the operating costs as leverage right now.
I don't think that it's been identified whether or not
for this or not.
On the property or not. The ownership of those properties has not been discussed.
Hey guys, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit over the past, I don't know, few months, back and forth. And, you know, it's one of these emotional, emotional things that we're all dealing with. I mean, I, I've tried to put meetings together and, and, you know, obviously done everything I can to weigh in on this. But at the end of the day, after looking at both sides of this and listening to, you know, a one-year deal and, you know, maybe we can do this, maybe we can do that. As I've said to the, to the 1913 folks, it's, this is a very steep, steep mountain to climb. I mean, you've got, not only do you have the dollars involved, putting together the fundraising of, you know, and maybe in their opinion, a million. In Lisa's opinion, maybe 3 million. So if it's somewhere in the middle, 2 million. The town would require a sub to be put aside, like we've done with the pool where you'd have another additional quarter of a million dollars, say, aside. So that raises the bar even further. So as I looked at that and, you know, I started thinking about all of this, all the issues, the parking and the, you know, what are we going to use this building for? And we've talked about the facility dude. And that's really what the Town Council has been doing for the past three years. How do we rid ourselves of buildings? And the fact that we would actually...
I can't hear Steve.
Yes.
Is he back?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, you're back now.
The fact that we're considering doing another building and adding that to our list of buildings is just...
I can't hear you, Steve.
Sorry. Am I out?
You're very, very faint.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. You know, the fact that we'd be adding another building is, it's just hard to think about. I mean, you know, it's a, the realities are too insurmountable to me at this time. And Tom, you know I love you, but I just, I just, you know, I just, I've been thinking about this so much over the past couple of months. I just can't get there. I really can't. And, you know, it is the library's property. They've worked hard at putting all those pieces together. You know, and to be on the five-yard line and have another big stumbling block and put in front of them, I just don't think it's fair, you know? They've actually offered to sell the building. You know, we could try to move the building. I love the idea of moving it if, if we could save it. I'd be all in. I'd help as much as I could to figure that out. But, you know, to sacrifice that town green and to step up right now and get in their way, I just can't see that this is a good idea. I really can't. And I've really tried my best to look at both sides of the argument. I really, really have. I've looked in the mirror several times. I love that building. I learned to read in that building. Tracy learned to read in that building. It's an emotional thing. It really, really is. I mean, it's, it's, it's tough. But, you know, we're doing this for our great-grandkids. We're not doing this for us. So it's the next 100 years. It's not the last 100 years. That's just the way I feel at the moment. So that's all I have to say.
I have to, this is Rich. I have to agree with Steve. I've been really torn on this issue as well. I live in an antique house and the town is currently struggling with what to do with two buildings that are very old and we love them both. Wave Any and the, and the current police station. But we're having trouble fitting either of them with town offices, et cetera, and using it for something. I can't imagine buying another building that we have to struggle with that as well. And, and I can't imagine putting this project off for two years.
I'm going to agree with Rich. I think the town owns, has tremendous fixed assets. But we also realize that, that they're expensive to maintain, especially older ones. And, you know, I also echo Rich's comments from earlier regarding Wave Any. But as it relates to the library, you know, I support Rich and Steve.
And I'll jump in and say that, you know, the library's been working on this for 15 years and they've raised, you know, eight and a half million.
for 15 years, and they've raised, you know, eight and a half million dollars. Tom, I just don't see the Preservation Alliance, you know, being able to raise the $2 million by the time we vote this budget. I know it's unfair, but, you know, unless you can find $2 million in two weeks.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't think that's the key issue, Sven. I mean, we could, we could, we could work out an accommodation on timing that didn't significantly show down their, slow down their process, but I, I don't think that's the key issue here. I don't think, I don't think money's the issue. I just think that, that what I'm hearing from the others is that it just doesn't work. Even, even if, even if it were fully paid and beneficially occupied, it's sitting in the middle of their town green. I would hope that's the, the judgment people are making, that, that, that just doesn't work for you guys. Because we can, I mean, i- if it's a question of, of, of money and use, you know, give us a chance. You know, we could compromise on the, you know, it doesn't have to be a full year, you know, put us to work and give us a chance to solve those things. That would be fair, if that's the real criteria, but is it really, though? I mean, you, at the end of the day, we're going to be owning a town, another town building, and even if it's fully endowed, that seems to be, that and the fact that it doesn't fit with the concept of the town green and the architecture, those seem to be more fundamental questions, uh, you know? From what I'm hearing from you guys. I, I think that's a judgment of, of what is the most important thing. I, but I do think that they all contribute. You say, but, you know, the most important thing is it interferes with the town green. But there is a question of use, and it hasn't been resolved. And there is a question of money, and it hasn't been resolved. And there is a question of, of, of parking and other complications that have not been resolved. So the sum total, and I wrote it down because they said it several times in the presentation, is they want clarity on the town's position. They want clarity. They want clarity on two things, the money and the direction. Tonight, we can offer them clarity on direction. In about a week, we're going to offer them clarity on the money. But tonight, I think they're asking us to, to, once and for all, pick a direction. And I know you're saying that it seems to be all about the town green, but I do think the other factors do contribute to what I'm hearing around the council. Anyone else?
Uh, Penny, um, I'm going to say I sat on many of the sessions, in fact, all of the sessions that they had as a focus group to discuss, um, the need for the library and the functions of the library. And I can recall big, huge designs on the floor of the library and land room, and I think in almost all of those designs, the, um, 1913 building was incorporated into the, the new design, moving it 90 degrees or what have you. I was a little surprised when the design came in not incorporating it at all. However, I will liken the discussion to the Richmond Hill Garage. Yes, it is a piece of our history. Um, yes, it has architectural components to it that can be, um, fully documented and still then remain a part of our history. But, um, having done the massive study that they committed in on all of our town buildings, we have excess space, um, you know, that is not being utilized by town functions, uh, and we have financing constraints to be able to support all of those buildings. So I think it will be, would be a challenge to accept another building and expect the taxpayers to be, you know, supporting the maintenance of it.
Maria? I think we've heard from three, four, five, six, seven of us so far. Anyone else?
I kind of would rather take advantage of the extra time to vote on the budget rather than vote on it next week and around, I mean, this doesn't really answer the question about the building, but I'm more concerned about the state, you know, we have never been in, we've never lived through what we're living through right now. I don't think we're going to bounce back the way we did in 2009, so, I mean, we could kind of buy some time to understand financially, um, the costs of everything, you know, and the amount we would fund in the library. I'm not sure about owning another building. I, I don't think I, I agree with that, knowing that we don't really understand what it will cost going forward, what parking would look like for that building, but, you know, I just keep thinking about the fact that the state has allowed towns to delay their budget vote, and, um, I think we should take advantage of that.
We were presented with new information tonight, compelling information around Tiger's April 17 deadline. So we, and I know you feel strongly, I know Mark feels strongly about, about taking the extra time. We're definitely, it's definitely on the table. We'll definitely talk about it. There's many good reasons now to postpone at least a few weeks. But, okay. Anyone else on, on, on the money or the direction? Liz?
Well, you know, I, I think Steve said it really well, and I, I don't think any of us aren't agonizing over this at some level. And, you know, looking at that building again tonight, you know, it made me really sad. But at the same time, I mean, I think we, we have to look forward and say, how do we get the best building we can have with the most services for our kids and grandkids going forward? And, and also as a town, do we want another building? And I know the answer to that is no. You know, it is, it is a big, uh, obstacle to figure out, you know, here's another building that we have to figure out what to do and how to pay for and how to maintain it, and, and, you know, we haven't gotten a really good handle on the purposes of some of our other buildings, including Wavenee. So, you know, to think that we would be able to answer that question in a year might be optimistic.
So I think I've heard from Hannah. How about, how about Mike? Are you out there?
I'm here. Yeah, I think at this point, we have to shut the conversation down. I mean, um, you know, it, like Liz said, I mean, you know, I've agonized over it. I don't like polishing what, what is our history, but I don't see any viable, I don't see how there's a way to harmonize the new building plans while retaining 1913 building. So like I said, other than maybe removing the facade and then placing it somewhere else at town, which I just don't see that, any viable plan for that. I just don't, I don't see how we can continue to kind of have that discussion. I think it just needs to come to an end. And quite honestly, my personal opinion, and we'll get into this later on the capital side, given everything with the financial markets, this is about the only capital request that I think should be approved, quite honestly, but we can have that discussion.
The only capital request?
Maybe, yeah.
Them's fighting words.
Got that right. I said maybe. I qualified it. We'll talk about some of the other things. I mean, other than something that's, you know, federally mandated or state mandated, but, you know, we can have that discussion later. I don't, I really want to...
Like police cars, you know?
Yeah, no, things of that nature, but I think we, I think we kind of need to really, really be very, very careful with any capital projects, but we don't need to have that discussion.
Okay, and so, Robin, I guess you're the, you're the last, not least.
So, no, I, I definitely agree with what Steve said. Um, I'm, you know, torn about this. I love that library. Um, I do have so many questions about owning another building. I have questions about just, um, you know, the great presentation that Keith did, but my concerns is going, you know, we just did the Wavenee, going over the ADA compliance, and, I mean, that's my big fear with this building is, is how do we afford it, or how, where's the money going to come from it? And I just think we need to go ahead with the library. I think it's important to the town. I saw the difference in Darien when they put in that library. I mean, it brought people to Darien. Um, people want their, people want a really nice library, and I think we need to go ahead with it, even though it is sad.
Okay. A- and for my part, you know, I think we actually, we could probably come up with the money. When this town wants something, they come up with the money, and I think that, and I'm also sad to see a beautiful old building go. Uh, for me, it comes down to function, and, you know, I think we've asked the library board many different ways how they could incorporate this function into their function, and, you know, what use would this building have? And for me, it came down to function and use, and we, we don't have a good use for this building that has inspired the money to follow. And I'm not sure that adding, you know, another month or so, we're going to find the alt, the, you know, the best possible use for this building. Uh, so that's what it came down to for me as the most important factor. Uh, it, it was not, um, Tom, it was not the town green. It wasn't the need to have a town green or not to have a town green. I couldn't think of a use for this building which was more important than the town. With that, I guess the, the best way to vote, because otherwise it gets too confusing if we all just raise our hand, because we're not necessarily all on the screen, is, I guess Rich should, uh, call, uh, call the roll. Go ahead.
John, I just want to say this. What would, what would we lose by waiting a month in allowing them to come through with some sort of proposal or idea? What is the rush at this point, since we're not approving the money? And they still have to go through the process of, of having the building be approved through the town to be demolished.
So if you're asking us to hold up the money until, you know, for, I think the Butterworth proposal is hold up the money, uh, for the preservation of the building, and I think that's what we're going to vote on tonight. If we do not vote for this proposal, it doesn't mean that a, a fabulously wealthy donor couldn't come up with a fabulous use for this building and the money to support it and convince, uh, P and Z to consider, or convince the library in the future. But what's being asked of the Town Council tonight is, are we willing to stop the project now to consider the Butterworth proposal? That's what's on the table today. Doesn't mean you might not, uh, you know, uh, turn down the money next week. So, Rich, can you call the roll? All in favor of the Butterworth Amendment?
John, I think you need a second. Do you have one yet?
He did. He got a second.
Okay. Ready. Tom Butterworth, you're first.
Aye.
Robin Bates-Mason?
No.
Liz Donovan?
No.
John Engel?
No.
Sven England?
Nay.
Mark Jimski?
No.
Steve Carl?
No.
Mike Morrow?
No.
Maria Naughton?
No.
Christina Ross?
Aye.
Rich Townsend, no. Penny?
No.
What'd you say?
No.
No? Okay. So it's, so it's, uh, 10, 10, uh, for, two against. I'm sorry, two against 10. 10 people wanted to turn it down, 2 people wanted to approve it.
Okay, so the motion does not carry. So the Town Council is not going to impose this on the library. If the library can be convinced, then the library can be convinced. But the Town Council is not going to make this a condition of the funding. That's what we learned tonight. Are there any further questions? Does, uh, does, does somebody have, uh, parting words?
I have another comment. I want to thank Tom and the group for really, uh, being, you know, respectful of the history of our town, and since you have so many creative architects on your committee, come up with an idea of how you can use part of the building, stones or bricks like we have with the Ferris, um, where, on the Richmond Hill Garage.
Is that for me?
Yeah. No, it was to Tom. It was to Tom to, and his committee to come up with some creative ideas, or, and Lisa as well. Um, we, we did it with the, um, Richmond Hill Garage, um, and...
So it's definitely part of our thinking, Penny. Uh, it, it is part of our thinking, either to repurpose those stones in the garden in a way that honors them and/or maybe to be able to use them in the fireplace inside. Either of those things. Furthermore, the plan is to call local artists and photographers to create works of art, so that we will have a permanent collection of art commemorating the memory of that building.
Great.
Hey, John, can I just, I just wanted to thank, um, you know, the 1913 folks, Carl and Rose Rothbart did an unbelievable job presenting and, uh, talking about this. Keith Simpson as well. I mean, these are people who really have done a lot for New Canaan, and it shouldn't be overlooked. They're great, great people. It's, it's a very difficult decision. It's not a very happy night for anybody, so, um, I just want to thank them for everything they've done. And obviously, Tom, you know, Tom has been a stalwart supporter of, of preserving in town, and it's, it's a tough one, too, Tom. I, I really do feel, and you and I have talked about it a lot, so I, I do feel for, uh, that building, but, you know, the future has to come, and now is the time.
Thanks to everybody for giving this such serious consideration.
Thank, Tom, I wanted to just say thank you. I've so, uh, really enjoyed getting to know you through this process and enjoyed discussing all of these things with you, and it, it's been a, a nice start to what I hope will be an ongoing friendship.
And, uh, you have presented us with a phenomenal opportunity for the town, and thank you for that. All right, so if there's nothing further, I don't think we need to do committee reports at, it's nearly 11:00. Since the First Electman is with us, and he hasn't said anything in at least an hour, I would like to give the First Electman an opportunity to close out our meeting, and, uh, and then we'll, we'll, we'll see you all, I guess, in 48 hours.
Right.
Kevin? Oh, you're on mute. Let me see if I can unmute you. Hold on.
John, you mean 44 hours.
There you go.
Am I in your agenda for an update? I didn't realize I was on the agenda.
You're setting the direction for the whole town, man, so I think, you know, you always get the last word if you want it.
Well, um... This was a tough decision. So I really, I respect everyone's opinions, and I, I, uh... It is a sad night, as, as Steve said, so, on that, I'll just say goodnight.
Okay. Goodnight, everybody. Thank you.